Here we go. Welcome to the first board meeting of 2021. Hard to believe. And at this time, first, I'm going to read you the preamble that we need to tell you about before we have a virtual meeting. In accordance with Executive Order N 2920, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually, and you can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. So having said that, I'd like to ask Supervisor Bone to please hold up the flag. And we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, thank you. I have to say, for my first Zoom meeting, running it, it is really odd not having an actual audience in the crowd, but happy for those of you who have tuned in. First, I do want to welcome our newest board member, Second District Supervisor Michelle Bushnell. Welcome to our team, and we look forward to working with you, and I think you're going to really enjoy this job most of the time.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
I also really want to thank our staff in the office here of Tracy, Brooke, and Ryan, and Kathy, because without them, we wouldn't be able to do any of this, and they save our bacon so often. So I just want them to know upfront how much we all appreciate you. And so, before we go on to the main part of the meeting, I do want to explain a couple processes I'm changing, and I ask you for goodness and understanding if things don't exactly go smoothly the first time around, but what I'm looking for is a way to make our meetings more efficient and consistent, and so we can all do the best job we can and not always drag things maybe longer than they need to. So I am a process geek, so these are some of the things I'd like to do at the meeting. For those of you who are calling in to make a comment, please raise your right hand by pressing star nine at the beginning of the item that you believe you're going to want to talk about. I heard something. Did someone say something? That's weird. I'm sorry. I thought I heard somebody say something twice, so I took a break. All right. So we want people to raise their hand by pressing star nine. At that point in time, eventually, your number will be called, and when your number is red, you will press star six to comment. And that'll also, well, star six will unmute yourself, so then you can comment. I'm pretty strict on the three-minute rule, as a lot of you may have known from the past, and I believe that everyone should have the same amount of time to talk as everybody else. So when you hit the two-and-a-half-minute mark as a speaker, you'll hear a tone, and that means you have 30 seconds to finish your comments. At the end of that allotted time, three minutes, you'll hear another tone, and at that time, your microphone will be muted. Please don't take us personally, it is so that everybody can have the exact same period of time to make comment to the board. So I appreciate your understanding of that. And yes, there are many of you who think we should be on the three-minute timer too up here on the board, and you never know, that might happen someday. Also, because I think it's important for people to take breaks, to be fresh and able to concentrate on their work, I'm going to try to have the board take breaks at 11:00, at 1:00, and at 3:30. So we'll see how that goes, but I just want everyone to know, whether you're on the board or the staff, or at home, hopefully you get a little time to grab coffee, take care of the things you need to do, and then come back for fish to our meeting. So I think that pretty much covers things. So at this point, I'd like to ask our CAO Nielsen if there are any modifications to the agenda.
Good morning, Chair Bass. Yes, there is one modification to the agenda. Supervisor Wilson is pulling Item C 17 for discussion.
All righty. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with that modification?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. That's your first second.
It is.
All right. So at this time, we'll go to public comment, and Ryan, I know I'm supposed to be able to see whose hands are up, but I don't.
If you click Participants on the bottom of your screen and Attendees, you'll be able to see it, and then what happened in the queue would be 7454.
Well, I want to say thank you again, Ryan. That's why we love our staff.
You're welcome.
All right. So our first speaker is 7454, and welcome Kent.
Virginia, it's an old and new year. Let's kind of try and start over. And again, same welcome to Michelle Bushnell there. I wish to comment on Item C 3, and I do wish, I applaud your new procedures you're doing there. I wanted to make mention upon that, and we'll all work through this together, hopefully. So it's consent, Item 33, C 3. William Wickman is being thanked for his service of the Humboldt County Aviation Advisory Committee. And as we're all aware, the airport has had some problems in the past, and still has some problems. So that's a really important committee for people to serve on. So I don't know who will be filling that person's thing. I think it was a thank you for him being, or maybe he's coming on, I don't even remember. But anyway, it's a very important position we have. We've had major problems out there. We've had studies done. We have a major federal lawsuit. My understanding is ongoing regarding what's going out there. So those people really need to be given a commendation for the service they provide, and I'll be talking about that federal lawsuit a little bit later in the thing. So thank you for my opportunity to speak. I also did wish to mention, I shout it again, I call him our mute master, Ryan Sharp there, and I applaud the procedures. Hopefully, all of us, including supervisors, will be muted when they're not actually speaking, and that would be a great policy to follow up on. We won't have all that chatter in the background and things barking and stuff like that. So thank you for opportunity to speak on your consent calendar today.
All right. Thank you, Kent. And our next comment, commenter is 74, we're not going to give you a second chance, Kent. 30533.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. I, first off, want to say thank you. I like the list of policies and procedures you're going to try to run as chair. I appreciate that. As someone that tries to follow, it's also hard for people following a meeting, not in person to know when to take a break, or in Humboldt County drive from one point to another point that may or may not have service. I just wanted to clarify, I wanted to speak on the Bimbo Properties Inc. rezoning. Was that the 17 that was polled, or am I missing hearing you?
Is that, okay, so that was the item that was polled?
Yes.
Okay. I will wait to speak on that at that time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. All right. So our next public speaker that has their hand up is 0151. And you look unmuted, 0151.
Good morning. This is Dottie Russell and Graham Russell, and we wanted to call first to say thank you, Michelle, for taking the leap here and helping us. And then I also didn't know how much the rest of the board knows about your involvement in Southern Humboldt, and I didn't know how much you all have an opportunity to know how involved in the schools, the businesses, and individual lives down here, no matter who they are.
Dottie, is this on the consent calendar?
No, I thought we were public comment.
No, not yet, but thank you. That'll come up shortly, and we'll let you back on it.
I'll go back.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
All right. So I see no other hands up, so Ryan, would you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass as five oh.
All right. So thank you very much. At this time, we will move on to our public comment period on items that are not on the agenda, and I know we have a few people who would like to comment on that. If they just raise their hand by pressing star nine. And our first one is Dottie. Welcome, Dottie, and Graham.
Back to the right moment to speak. So Michelle has been really, really involved in Southern Humboldt in so many different ways, and I didn't know if you knew how much she has been involved, so involved in the schools, involved as the chamber president, involved in helping our economy that has so tanked, it's unbelievable, and individual people in her interaction personally with each person that lives in this area. I don't know about her interaction in other areas, but I know here that every single person matters to her, and I think that's great, and I didn't know if you knew that. I just wanted to share that, and then also, I wanted to talk about how we can have access to each person. So I understand that we have a supervisor for our area, but I know that all of you on the board represent us, and so I'd like to find a way that we can interact each person that is now feeling a little more involved in having a voice, how we can all participate. And a lot of the cities have really great programs, but unincorporated areas don't get a lot of resources and help that they need. So I don't know how to make that happen, but I hope we can. And lastly, there's been an issue in the past about the Ethics Committee. I'd like for you to revisit that and see if it's now time to have an Ethics Committee again. I think that would be helpful. And that's it for now. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, Dottie. And our next speaker is Kent. If I recognize your number, I will say your name unless that bothers you, so let me know. Welcome, Kent.
Virginia, yes. I want to start over in a new year, but I do want to stress some things and maybe fix something that's been happening and ongoing and seems to be ramping up. It's basically the public being interrupted when they're making public comment by one particular supervisor. This supervisor during the meeting happened to have some angst, because I happened to have an opinion that the CAO's office should be elected position, and I was told to go up his ass rather than harass the help. Now, that kind of language, in my opinion, should be sanctioned and admonished. The public has a right to have their say. Your prior chair, at the time when I was so flustered of not being able to make my comment, said, Kent, you can go ahead, and you have one more minute to go do. So I really appreciate that maybe we can get past that thing, that these kind of verbs and words and things that are very hurtful and not proper in this chamber will cease, and it's not my intent to move forward with those words. But on the other hand, I also think the supervisors should respect our rights to make our comments uninterrupted without using such words. I did want to make comment also on something that appears to have been buried. It's United States District Court, Northern Division of California, United States of America plaintiffs, United States of America suing Humboldt County. And I've gotten this out to a few different people. I think people should be informed of this. It appears to have been buried. I track things, and I was not aware of this till it was brought to my attention, and it's not a very good thing for us to be going under without having transparencies. All kinds of accusations are being made in here regarding fraud, changing reports that were not necessarily desirous to be brought to the board even, and this litigation here is not a small thing, and it's kind of a problem we seem to have coming out of our CAO's office. Accusation number 24, upon reviewing the original report, CAO and DPW instructed Valier to revise the original made report by changing wording that implicated the county in violation of the county's grant assurance and FAA's revenue division sustainability and fee on rental policy, structured policies. Then the June report specifically changed, deleted information conclusions in the report. We're doing all kinds of money for reports. To have undue pressure put upon the reports that we are paying for as the public and being changed, and then having accusations of fraud against people here is something we're entitled to know. The Brown Act needs to be followed. Stipulations allegedly have been made in this case. I have not received those. I'm not even sure the county council's office has followed correct procedures as far as documenting these kind of expenditures, and I'm really concerned to find out that this thing has been buried in the opinion of the public, and that is the public perception. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this particular topic today.
Great. Thank you very much, Kent. And I do have to admit that I forgot to push your timer button, so I appreciate that you kept it brief. I'm learning how to operate, I feel like I'm in Mission Control right now, trying to operate all sorts of buttons. So with that, we'll move on to our next speaker and the last one in line for public comment, and that is Thomas. Welcome, Thomas.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. I just, I want to thank the county for all the work they've done to get us where we're at with the cannabis rules, the fact that we're able to have annual licenses, but right now that the state is changing and reorganizing into one entity instead of three licensing entities, I believe it's time for you to reach out and use your powers to connect with legislators to change some more rules. Back history of me, at five, I was hidden from the cops. I was busted at 16. In my mid-20s, I was held at gunpoint for operating equipment on a piece of property that had an eighth of weed on it, Sheriff's Department. So let's change the rules. I have a child, she's 19. I can't legally have her work for me right now. She could have an entry-level job. College is junk with COVID. At 30K, by the time she's 21, she can be making 50K a year, but I can't legally do that. So those are some rule changes as far as family help that I'm asking you to reach out and change the rules. It's also family help as far as processing. There's no need for a family farm of 10,000 square feet to have to build an ADA-compliant processing facility when they have a resident and it's family that can clock out, use a resident for the restroom facilities, wash their hands, eat their meal breaks, and then go back in and process, and everything's sanitary and clean, and that keeps the craft cannabis. It's something I'm asking you. I think right now is the time that you can reach out to the state and make a change. You've made a great change already, but let's do some more work, and I think we need to protect families. I'd also like to see a plan where there's a possibility of some of these families that have been here for five, 10 years on PPZ partials, they've been living here forever. If there's any way they've been evaded, let's figure out a way to let them in at 2,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet, some way to let those families, because the community is stronger whenever you have people residing within the community, and that's something I believe strongly about. And when you have lots of people just here to extract resources, grow weed, and get the money out of the county, it's not doing the county good. But if we can figure out a way to have people living, residing, and also working within their property, reducing fuel for fire loads and all that kind of stuff, we're going to have a stronger, happier, healthier community, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. And seeing no one else, we will move on in our calendar. I did want to ask Ryan Sharp, our savior in many ways, can you, I was mentioning there was someone who tried to find our agenda today and is not in the usual place. Can you briefly just explain, if someone is looking for our agenda online and they're not finding it, can you give a real brief rundown of the best place for them to find it? I know you mentioned it to me, but I thought it should come from you.
Yeah. We're in a new calendar year, and a lot of times, people's browsers default to the 2020 calendar year or the current month we're in. So because we're in a new year, so you'll still find it in the same location at humboldt.legistar.com, but you need to change the calendar year to 2021. When you do that, it will be front and center, along with the Planning Commission's agenda as well. If you choose all, if you choose Board of Supervisors, it will be the only one.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Ryan. So at this time, we're going to move on to our special presentation, and we are getting a COVID update today from Dr. Hoffman and Michelle. So I guess we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, and Humboldt County, and welcome, Supervisor Bushnell. So, New Year, Happy New Year to everyone, 2021. We hope that there's new hope as well. I'm going to spend the majority of the time today talking about vaccines. I think that's what's on everyone's mind, and it's the tool that we really feel is going to end this pandemic. So where are we at in Humboldt County? Three weeks ago, we got our first shipment of Pfizer vaccine. Three weeks ago today was the first vaccinations, and since then, we've received about 5,500 vaccines in Humboldt County, and we've given about 3,600 of those so far. Second doses of the vaccines have arrived as well this week. So the first week, we received 1,950 Pfizer doses. Those second doses, 1,950 of the Pfizer, arrived this week, so those second doses will begin this week. We did not receive any more Pfizer this week, so it's, you know, one thing I'm going to talk about is kind of the flow, ebb and flow of the vaccine as it comes. We expected this to potentially happen, that we might get quantities of vaccine early on, but not as much as we start to see second doses. So where are we at in giving out those doses? So we have partners in the community that are licensed to give out this vaccine. There's currently six across Humboldt County. The four major hospitals are all licensed COVID vaccinators, along with UIHS, Open Door, and Public Health is also licensed to give out vaccine as well. So we've been doing that over the course of the last three weeks, and, you know, we still have a remainder to get through, and we have a plan to get through that. So the remaining 2,000 doses, we have a plan in place to start getting those out through all of those providers over the next two weeks, while we expect to see very little new vaccine coming in, because we're pretty much only receiving second doses at this point. So there are other partners as well that are coming online to start giving out vaccines. So yesterday, the first CDC pharmacy partnership began with one of our skilled nursing facilities, where the CVS Pharmacy came in and vaccinated the staff and residents at one of our skilled nursing facilities. And I heard it went really well, and they have more scheduled later in the month. We have stepped in as public health as well to help with those skilled nursing facilities, because we felt that there was a delay in that. So our nursing staff has also gone into a few of the skilled nursing facilities to start vaccinating staff in those facilities, so they don't have to wait two to three more weeks to get their vaccine in tier one of Phase 1A. We're also starting a partnership with Safeway Pharmacy, and that should also help folks who are not part of the larger medical systems to start to get vaccinated in the course of the next few weeks. So where we're at right now is that if you're part of a major medical organization within Humboldt County, and this is true across the country, across California and across the country, if you're part of one of those major organizations, you've probably been offered your chance to get a vaccine. And now we're working on the folks who are not a part of those groups, independent practices, specialty offices, dental offices, people who are not working for St. Joe's, Open Door, Mad River, or have no affiliation with those organizations. So those are the groups we're working with right now. Public Health is coordinating with all of the providers who can give vaccine to start to give it to those groups. And Public Health is also starting our own clinic tomorrow. We're starting our own clinics three days a week that we are hopeful could vaccinate as many as 750 people per week in the coming weeks. So that's, you know, the first phase. We're moving through, as we had said all along, we expected Phase 1A, which is the healthcare workers, to take us through to about mid to late January. We're only in the first week of January, and we're definitely on course for that. And as we've said all along, this really, the limiting factor is going to be how much vaccine we're getting and at what rate. And so we got a bunch of vaccine in the first few weeks. We've been working through that, and we expect to get smaller quantities in the next couple of weeks. So as we work through the second doses, we can start to scale up if we get new first doses of vaccine. And we're also preparing for Phase 1B, which is going to be a much larger group. So right, you know, currently, we're getting about 1,000 to 2,000 vaccines per week that are, again, mostly been almost exclusively distributed through our hospital networks, and then more recently through Open Door and UIHS. At some point, we will need to be getting probably like 5,000 to 6,000 doses of vaccine each week. We are planning for that, so that when that day arrives, that we are offered 5,000 to 6,000 doses a week, we will be ready to start giving that out. But until that time, we will continue to use the networks that can handle the volume that we are given right now, which would be the hospitals, the clinics, and our public health clinic, which is going to start vaccinating this week. So what are some of the other resources that are helping with this? We have our EOC, who's helping step in with logistics for, you know, for coordinating a mass vaccination clinic through Public Health, which, again, I mentioned, is starting this week, tomorrow. And, you know, we have our public health nurses who are coordinating all of these groups of people who, again, are not a part of a major organization, helping them find a home where they can get their vaccine, be it through Safeway, through Public Health, or one of the clinics or hospitals who are willing to step up and take on those groups and vaccinate them who are not a part of their own staff. So that's where we're at right now in terms of Phase 1A and getting through it. There's been questions about how this plan was laid out. These, you know, I think I've mentioned in the past that this was a process that was planned for months. Plans were submitted to CDPH in November and revised in December. They were posted on the CDPH website, reviewed by CDPH and our own staff here at Public Health, and I believe they're available for public viewing and comment, if anyone wants to see those. We feel that the vaccination process in Humboldt County is going very well. We are ahead of our counterparts in the rest of the state, and certainly based on what I'm seeing in the news reports, the rest of the country. We're prepared to continue to vaccinate at higher numbers each week as this goes on, so that when we are offered more vaccine, we will be able to handle that. So that's where we're at right now in terms of vaccine. The second piece I wanted to update everyone on was our tier status. As everyone's aware, last week, we were surprisingly put into the red tier. And I think it made it very clear that all of us at Public Health were surprised by that, given the numbers that we saw internally, and I've spoken to why that is, that we see data in real time here in Humboldt County, working with our epidemiologists and our investigations team. And the state is on a two-week lag, more like almost two and a half weeks, because they're, the way the data is coming into them. So I cautioned last week that we might easily go back into purple, and my update for today is that the numbers do look solidly purple for this week. So what does that mean? So to go back into purple, we would have, there are two numbers that we are watching very closely, which would send us back into purple. One is the case rate, which was 12.3 last week. It had, if it went up 15%, that would put us back into the purple if that holds for two weeks. So that happened this week, for the first week, and it went up to 16.3, and that is above a 34% increase. So we've met that 15%. Additionally, was the positivity rate, which was down to 4%, and that was the one that I had mentioned last week, that was the week before, only 0.1% away from the 5% cutoff. And that number is now up to 5.2%, which is also above the cutoff that would push us into the purple tier. So both of the metrics, which might push us up into the purple tier- So both of the metrics, which might push, push us up into the purple tier, both went up into the range that would do that. So if those numbers hold for this coming week, next Tuesday, we will be going back into the purple tier. I, I think that locally, the data suggests that that is likely to happen. And so I think that we should prepare for that as Humboldt County, that that change will likely happen next week, that we will be back in the purple tier. When that, when and if that occurs, we would stay in purple tier for at least two weeks, upon which time we would be reevaluated. And again, if those metrics came back down to the red tier levels, if it holds for two weeks, we can go back into the red tier. So again, we're in a place in Humboldt County where we are the only open county in the entire state, given the numbers this week. Because every other county that is in the red below the purple tier, uh, is under regional stay-at-home orders. So I would encourage us as Humboldt County to continue to consider acting as if we are in the purple tier. For one, because I think the level of virus in our community dictates that. And number two, I think it's likely that we will go back into the purple tier next week. And so that, with that, I'll conclude my comments and I appreciate everyone's time today and look forward to any discussion. Thank you.
All right, and Michelle, would you like a chance to add?
I just wanted to mention that the, the data will be public in terms of the state, the tier of the blueprint and the tiers that the counties are in will be public today. Just so that everybody is aware of that, it's not a secret, it will be known. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, before we go to public comment, let's, uh, have some questions from the supervisors. And I'm trying to get myself in that habit of looking at how, hands being raised on the, on the, uh, the participant list. So, um, if you can start trying to do the star nine to raise your hand as, that board members, I'd appreciate it just to get myself kind of used to that. But the first person I saw with a hand up was, there it is, Supervisor Madron. I see your hand. You might want to unmute.
There we go, how's that?
Better.
Can you hear me now? Yep, better? Okay, sorry about that. Needed to get my headphone on. Um, I just want to be very brief. Dr. Hoffman, thank you very much for that information. Uh, I'm getting a lot of questions around the community about our vaccination plan. I'm wondering if there's some sort of a handout that you and Michelle may have, uh, produced. Uh, I assume there is some information I know on the dashboard, but it'd be really nice if there was just a real straightforward handout that we could share with our constituents on what the vaccination plan is. Thank you.
All right, um, do you want to, anyone want to? Do you want to answer that Ian, or?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely going to work on media messaging this week around making sure that folks get that information. I hope I was clear with the plan today. What I said today is the plan. I don't know there, you know, I've said also all along, it's, we're building the ship as we sail it. And so it's hard to give you specifics about something we don't know about. We don't know how much vaccine we're getting each week, so we have to plan according to what we have and what we know we have, what we think we will get. When we think we will get larger numbers of vaccine, we will definitely start to vaccinate larger numbers of people in a way that is going to require very big clinics. As of right now, we don't have that kind of vaccine. And so the, the plan is to really call people in by groups of the organizations that they are a part of, through these, you know, different clinics that I mentioned today. So the step one of the plan was to make sure that the hospitals got through all, in the, in the big, large, uh, group, got through all of their vaccine. Now they're available to start to vaccinate other groups outside of those, uh, organizations. And then phase one B should be starting towards the end of January. And, you know, we, we'll see what that looks like. I mean, I think it depends again on the number of vaccines that we're given.
All right, and I'm, I see Supervisor Bushnell has a question, but I do see the sheriff has his hands up. I assume you may be wanting to, uh, follow Ian's comments.
Yeah, just, uh, know that the EOC is also there, uh, trying to assist with public health and, and create a plan to, uh, distribute the, the vaccine where we can. And so this is a, this is like Dr. Hoffman said, this is something as far as federal, state, local level. It is something that, um, that is again in struggle. Uh, the opportunity to be on a, a call with Dr. Galley last week with the state sheriffs. And he said this is a, an issue throughout 58 counties. But also I think what is really, really telling is that as far as this being open to the public, a vaccine is likely six to nine months away from being readily available, um, to the public. And so that was something that was kind of shocking to me last, you know, last week when, uh, when we spoke to Dr. Galley. So, so it is going to take some time. And, uh, but once we get the vaccines, you know, here, or the Office of Emergency Services is, is poised to assist with public health with, uh, with logistics and, and trying to, uh, um, push out as fast as possible. And just, and just pivoting away from that a little bit, you know, there was a change this, this week regarding COVID compliance. We've had a COVID compliance line to our joint information center since the beginning of the pandemic. And that number was 441-3022. We are no longer operating that number. We are now referring all of the cases as far as COVID compliance, whether it's businesses, you know, individual situations, gatherings, those kind of things to the specific jurisdictions. So the city of Eureka, Arcata, County of Humboldt, uh, all those specific, um, um, jurisdictions, you know, we have those numbers available on our website through a press release, uh, as of last week. And, uh, and so those numbers can be readily available for people to specifically call in those complaints to, within those jurisdictions. So it's a way that we can quickly get that information to the jurisdiction that's going to handle it. And, uh, we believe that's, again, moving forward, this is the best way of handling it.
Right, thank you Sheriff Hansel, and Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi, good morning, Dr. Hoffman. I have, uh, several questions. My first question, please indulge me as I'm new, and so I, I tend to ask a lot. The phase one B, who does that? Who would be involved in that? Second question is, do, um, we have a protocol for teachers so that we could get our kids back in school as the kids are having such a rough time and have been out for a long time? Also, I see Southern Humboldt Healthcare is doing a sign-up for a vaccine so that they could anticipate what they need. And is there, um, any possibility that we would do that as in Humboldt County as a whole, so that we would have a better idea? And I think that's it.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. Yeah, no, really great questions. So phase one B is, is, uh, still not entirely worked out. We haven't, uh, finished phase one A, so, uh, there are, there are outlines and guidance, but, um, it'll still be worked on in terms of the order and the ranking of it. But we do know that it's going to include people over the age of 75, that it's going to include teachers and first responders and other frontline, uh, essential workers. So tho- those folks we know will be in there. Once we get more guidance on, on, you know, within those, those groups, how to move forward. And once we have enough vaccine to finish with phase one A, we will start opening up the phase one B. In terms of schools, uh, yeah, I mean, Dr. Frankovich has worked very closely with our local schools to try to get them open and keep them open, uh, from the beginning. She continues to work with them. I've been in communication with our, uh, you know, educators here in Humboldt County. You know, currently the way it stands, uh, would not be able to reopen schools, unless you remain in the red tier for a third week, which I, again, I think is unlikely, given what the numbers look like, which is why I want to make sure that everyone understands where things are headed. So schools that are open can remain open and we have worked with them to, to keep that safe. And then there are new plans coming from the governor's office that include, um, recommendations for how to safely reopen schools as well as testing guidelines that might keep schools safer and, and money that will help the schools, you know, reopen safely and stay open safely. Um, and then I think, uh, alluding back to the first part of your question with phase one B, is that the more teachers we can get vaccinated will feel a lot better about getting those teachers back into the classroom, um, once they have their vaccines onboard. I think there was one more part of your question, I'm sorry if I didn't get to all of it.
So, um, Southern Humboldt Healthcare is doing a sign-up and I was wondering about the availability for Humboldt.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, we just saw that yesterday too. That's not part of public health, but I think it's a great, you know, community initiative, you know? So we are not the administrators of the vaccine at, at, um, public health, we are sort of the coordinators. So when we get to the next larger phases, it's, it's hard to know, again, what that is going to look like because we don't know about the availability of the vaccine. So I, I have encouraged the local providers to start to, to look and see if they might want to prioritize for phase one B in terms of their population who are old, you know, over the 75 or older and, or people who have medical, high-risk medical conditions. And then I, you know, what it's going to look like in terms of outreach to those different, uh, groups, I think will depend a lot on, uh, again, how much vaccine we have and, and where we can distribute it in the community. With, with only the six vaccinating sites right now, if that were expanded, which I think is the idea by the state is to get more of those providers onboard as time goes on. But right now, we're limited to those, uh, you know, six places plus public health can set up. So, so it'll, it'll, you know, that's why it's, it's, uh, you know, there is a plan, but, but the plan has to be fluid because it all depends on how much vaccine is coming down the road and you just don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question, um, that I've gotten from several people is, when you put out your numbers, you know, you should be able to add one, two, and three equals whatever, and they don't seem to add up. So can you explain that?
Dashboard.
Yeah, um, you know, we're, we're dealing with, um, very complicated system of how these numbers get tracked over time. And, and so this gets back to the heart of why could the state have one set of numbers and we locally have a different set of numbers? We work very hard to, to try to, to rectify any, um, differences, but there are sometimes things that happen. We're given a case that is, uh, called a Humboldt County case, but it maybe was later determined that that person was out of jurisdiction. So they might have actually been a resident somewhere else. Maybe they got their test in Humboldt, but they live in another county or even another state. Sometimes that happens, you know, weeks or even a month later. There's other things like the type of test that is required to be a COVID case has to be a PCR test. And there are other tests called antigen, antigen, antigen tests that can cause, uh, can sometimes slip through and get into those numbers. And so if we catch things like that, we might have to renew them. So we, we do our best. I, I haven't seen it be off by more than a couple of numbers. And then I think the other thing is just that that website gets updated once a day. We only have one webmaster who does that. And, uh, so sometimes if you're looking at it, we might put out the report in the media at one o'clock, but that website might not get updated until five o'clock. Because of the flow of information. So sometimes it's off by larger numbers just because it hasn't been updated by the webmaster. But I, I, I feel that the integrity of our data is very strong. I can stand behind it. This is an extraordinary group of hardworking public health folks. And, uh, I don't think that there's any, uh, data integrity issues here. Uh, I wouldn't stand behind it and say things like, you know, what I said last week that we should act as a purple, um, if I didn't feel strongly that the data was, was through data.
Okay, thank you very much for the answers.
And I don't see any other supervisors, um, at least with their hand raised. Oh, well, that's supposed to be a push, push your raised hand, Rex. That's all right. Yes Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, just a, it's, again, I'm confused as always. I know Supervisor Madron asked, is there a plan? Because we're 10 months into this and I, I kind of thought with all the, everything we've got working on this, we would have variations of how many we would get. And I would, and I was just wondering, is there a plan we can show people? I mean, and we'll tell them it's complicated and everything else, but is, is there a plan? I know plans change. But is there a written plan, one A, one T V? And then the other thing is we have six operators. I know we have 2,000 vaccinations, but we don't know if we're getting any more this week. Isn't this an item we'd probably want going off our, don't we want our inventory to be zero? So wouldn't we want to get as many people online now? And maybe some of these people outliers you're going to use going when we do get five, six, 8,000 a week? Maybe we could send them 100 and 100 to test drive them to make sure they understand without being overwhelmed with, okay, here's your 800 vaccinations. And we can test drive these people and have them online. And then I didn't know of the local pharmacies, I know we have CVS to the federal side of it doing the rest of them. That's completely out of our realm. But are we talking to any of the local pharmacies? Because I know that's where a lot of us go for flu shots, unless we get them here. And a lot of people get them for flu shots and stuff like that. And just so people will know, this is no different from getting any other type of shot. I mean, it's, it's, you don't have to, except you do have to wait 15 minutes after the shot. Do we still have to do that for reactionary time? And they can do that in their car with a, with a, with a phone call if there's an issue. So I've just want, is there a written plan or is there just a plan we've got knocked around? Even though it's, and then the other thing is, you said we're the administrators, but we're not the coordinators. So is one the coach, one the quarterback, or? I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know. Admin and coordinate seem to go hand in hand, but you said we're the administrators, we're not the coordinators. And that kind of had me concerned. Unless I misheard you.
Sure, I can clear all that up Supervisor Bone. So again, the plan is, was submitted back in November and revised in December. It was submitted to CDPH, the California Department of Public Health. It is, I believe, posted online. I, I saw it posted online last month. I haven't looked at it recently. I don't know, 50, 60-page document that was based off of experiences with H1N1 vaccination. And, uh, that plan is, is available, so it's there. Again, I think that it is fluid mostly because of the, uh, the supply of vaccine. So we were front-loaded with a lot of vaccine. And we, again, are not the, we are not the administrators of the vaccine in public health. We are the coordinators. The administrators are the hospitals and the clinics. And that was the plan from the federal government down to the state governments down to us. Was to coordinate this through the, the hospital systems and the large clinic systems. That's the plan that we put into place. We gave the vaccine to those folks as soon as they arrived in Humboldt County. And they have been working through that over the course of the last weeks. I've been in constant communication with the heads of all of those organizations on their progress. And those are, that's how I get those numbers, uh, you know, the, they are moving through it. And this is a, a, honestly, a vast community effort. It's incredible, the amount of work they've taken out of their daily schedule to make this happen. I mean, you have to understand, these are organizations like St. Joe's Hospital that are also taking care of our COVID patients, they're doing open heart surgery, they're doing transplant, I mean, they're, they're all the things that they have to do normally. And they're also giving 2,000 vaccines on top of it over the course of the last few weeks. So we are moving as, as quickly as, as needed. And the, uh, the community is doing fantastic. So I think if, if, you know, and then also, public health has decided to step in because there have been some delays, not locally, I would say, on the federal level, with giving vaccine out to a lot of our, our phase one A groups. And so we have stepped in locally to try to speed things along. Uh, and with the, with the strike teams are going to skilled nursing facilities and the clinics that will start, uh, tomorrow for the next six weeks, uh, at least. and the clinics that will start tomorrow for the next six weeks, at least. So that's the answer to the question of the plan and how it's working and who is administering, who's coordinating. In terms of local pharmacies, yes, we are, we have been working with other local pharmacies, Papa and Boonies, to get them online as COVID vaccine providers. But the process is cumbersome and it takes a while. So those have not been approved, but they will be hopefully soon. So those folks will also come online in the coming weeks. And I think that was, Michelle, you had it, you handed it to them.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Supervisor Bone, by administrators, what, what that references is that public health is not the lead entity in actually giving the vaccine to individuals, like putting it in people's arms. It's other entities, healthcare providers, that we are partnering with to do that. We are the coordinators, meaning we are working with partners around how to get their staff vaccinated. How can they run clinics to get other groups that are not part of their organization vaccinated? That's how we are the coordinator. But we are not, public health is not the lead administrator of the vaccine, meaning giving it to people in a, in a shot.
The application.
That's, that's what we're not. And so we need to leverage all of the other partners in healthcare to do that because we have 134,000 people, ideally, assuming that everybody gets it, to vaccinate. So I just wanted to point that out. That's the distinction between administrator and coordinator.
Michelle, you brought up a great point while you brought that up. Are, are we vaccinating five and six and seven, eight-year-olds?
No, the vaccine, the vaccine is not for anyone under 14.
So we dropped, we dropped down to about 100 and...
Right, right. I was being...
No, I, no, I understand, no, but you brought that up because people ask me, do I need to get my child vaccinated? So that was great.
No, it's a really good point.
I wanted to give a shout out. I went to Optum on Sunday, walked in and literally walked in, got tested, walked out within four minutes. Sunday at 1:47, got back in my truck at 1:51 and without an appointment, which I'm probably not supposed to say, but I just walked in. And available, so the availability was there. I got my results this morning. And the only thing I can't do because I'm stupid is get through the computer network to find out what my results are. They make, I've, I've got, I don't know what my middle name or my first male born is, so.
You'll get a call, Rex, from, from public health if it's positive.
Yeah, I figured I had, so I, yeah, I figured I would have, so. But anyway, yeah, I just walked in as Joe Blow and they, it was, it was out. Optum was very, and it wasn't, it wasn't half as bad the first time as we had it, Billy.
They are, they are able to take walk-ins now, which is nice. There was one other point that I wanted to say about the plan. So there's that 50 to 60-page plan that people can see. It's not the granular information that people are interested in. It's not the who's in what tier, what groups are in each tier and all of that. So there is the, there is a plan that counties are submitting to the state that we post on the website that has what types of entities are in each tier and our local estimate, our best estimate of a tentative timeline for that. That will be posted in the coming days. We are submitting that to the state. We're trying to fill in the information. That's what will be on the website. We will email it to you once we have it on the website so that you can have it directly. But that's what people want. I know, that's what people want.
That would have been a great answer.
That's okay. It's, 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 there's a lot. There's a lot of moving parts here. And so I was reminded that we are, we are submitting, our staff are doing that in terms of putting the information in there. People will have a sense. I also wanted to say, in terms of asking the public, you know, who wants the vaccine and what types of groups want the vaccine? For Supervisor Bushnell's question, we have a healthcare workforce survey that we've sent out to partners in healthcare to find out how many staff do they have, when, what categories for prioritization? So we have that sense. We also have a community survey. When someone calls the JIC, the Joint Information Center, and says, when can I get my staff vaccinated? I'm a business owner, for example. There's a survey that they can get in a link that they then fill out. Where they, it's very simple. They tell us kind of who, how many staff do they have that are in a high risk of exposure, medium risk of exposure, and a low risk of exposure? So that we're gathering that data. And we have that on file so that once we get to the right tier for certain groups like businesses, for example, we will have that data. So we're not necessarily entertaining a community-wide, everybody do this survey in the county because we're getting that through various other means. But that doesn't mean that we won't do that in the future, in the near future. It's just that we have to be mindful of what information do we need to know in order to be planning and how much vaccine are we going to get? So we do have surveys that we are, we are putting out there. And then our partners, like Southern Humboldt Health, are doing other surveys for other communities. So just to add that piece.
Thank you, Michelle. With that ques, with what you just...
Actually, yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah.
Go ahead. With you.
Are schools considered a business? And would the schools then need to fill out that survey? No?
No, it's a different, that's a different process for the schools to get vaccinated. Hoffman, I don't know, you're probably more suited.
That's okay. I just wanted to clarify for myself. Thank you.
At this time, I'd actually like to drop a public comment if... I do not see any hands raised yet. Whoop, you got one. All right, so welcome, Kent. You are the first commenter.
I'm having a hard time understanding what's happening here. I'm, I'm not totally stupid, I don't think. People have accused me of that, but I don't think I am. The question Rex Bone asked was, why haven't all of those been administered? And here, here's the reason why. I'm, I'm self-diagnosed autistic. I don't quite think the way people do. Some of the earlier questions, I'd have a chessboard in my mind. Every single scenario in a little timeframe, I will sit and analyze. If this happens, that happens, if this happens. So it's a little hard for me to relate. If, if you're trying to get as much vaccine out there as you can, every single one of those vaccines should have been done. If I'm a governor or if I'm somebody up the ladder sending out vaccines and they say, well, I guess nationally, they say only one-third of them are put out there. It sounds like maybe we're two-thirds or something thereabouts. If we've used all of it up, we should be the first on the list to get the vaccines because we've shown the ability to get it out there. So, so it, it kind of troubles me that we don't have zero vaccines able to give right now. We've had plenty of time to develop a plan. It sounds like there is no plan, really. I understand it's fluid and all these things, but unless you folks are taking an autistic perspective on this and doing all the different scenarios, the list of businesses, that's just a wonderful list, but what's happening, so possibly, is that older people who are not part of a business, who are 60 years or older, need, they need, and we want to get on a list so that we have a little bit more assurance that somebody is eventually going to get us a vaccine rather than being all these other lists which we're not part of. So this is very troublesome to me. I was very pleased, I, I, I think the whole COVID designation, red and purple, should be how many ICU beds we have. And we have them available is my understanding. And so that's what should control what we're in. The rest of these facts and figures don't seem to jive. It sounds like we got three weeks, we're going to get one-third of the vaccine out remaining, and it's going to take three weeks to get it out there? That should be inventoried on a daily basis and moved around so that those are put out there instantly. That's my opinion. That's my recommendation. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this. You can see I'm a little bit troubled.
Great, thank you, Kent. And there are no other public speakers, so we'll return this to the board for any last questions. And Michelle?
I just wanted to clarify, the vaccine is for under 16, not 14. Right, Dr. Hoffman? That's...
Over 16.
Over 16, I'm sorry, yes. Over 16, not for younger than 16.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to say that all the questions that had been given to me by constituents and that I had been answered in a robust discussion today. So thank you very much.
All right. Okay, we do have one more public comment. And what I'm going to tell folks, this is also part of this new year, is when I reach the last one, then if someone doesn't call in within that three minutes, there won't be another public comment on that item. But I will open it up one time because I did not specify that, so I apologize. So, yes, Thomas, welcome.
Good morning. Some of us have old iPhones and the Star 9 doesn't hit very often. You have to push it a couple of times. But as far as the vaccine, I, I know there's a lot of people I've talked to that don't want to get it. I know I'm personally one of those. And to hear Kent's statement that there's a lot of people that want to get it that aren't able to sign up on a list, I sure hope that if this, if you look at the death rate of this virus, that those people that are in, more likely to die from the virus are like first in line before someone in my age group getting a vaccine. Whether I own a business or not, I think that should be irrelevant, in my personal opinion. So hopefully, we can work towards getting vaccines to those that want it and those that are more likely to be affected negatively by the virus. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. So seeing no other hands, we will again, once we return to the board and, and any, any other comments from supervisors or Dr. Ian, or Dr. Hoffman, or Michelle? I'm not seeing anything, so thank you for spending the time with us today. And I think we got you out of here in a reasonable amount of time, so you know you have a lot to do. And Sheriff Ponsel, did you have something you wanted to say? No? Right, sounds good. All right, well, then we will move on to the next item. Thank you all. So the next item, we're on to items that are pulled from consent, and I believe it's item 17 regarding the Bimbo petition. And Supervisor Wilson pulled it, so I'll leave it up to you to explain your concerns or thoughts.
Thank you, and I did want to ask that Director Ford at least give it just a basic summary of the application so that my concerns and thoughts have some context. So is Director Ford available or ready to jump in and just give some outline of what's being proposed?
Yeah, it's through the chair. If I come in and share my screen, this is a petition for a rezoning general plan amendment. And, sorry, I'm trying to get it open here. And so this is not the actual rezoning general plan amendment. This is just to allow staff and the applicant to begin to work together to process this. And what this would do is, this is in the Bimbo community. It would change the land use and zoning on these parcels that are within the area that is shown here. And so basically, looking at the land use map, what it would do is that it would basically take and extend, should be changing color here in a minute, the land use that is here, the R, and would extend it up into this area. And then it would take and change the zoning, which is R3 and R1 to A, E, to be more of an agricultural use. It would also change these parcels that have been already subdivided in this area. There's, I believe, 23 total parcels in this area, and it would merge them back to 11 parcels. So really, it's appropriate for the board if you would like to give direction on this or not approve it, either way. Your vote today, we just authorized staff to begin to process the rezone and general plan amendment. The, any direction you give will be taken into account. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Supervisor, anyone have a, I have a question, but they don't see, oh, okay, Supervisor Wilson.
Sure, so thank you for the introduction into that. And so the reason I, I pulled this particular item is I do have some comments with relationship to what's occurring here. And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ford, what we're seeing is a conversion from residential to AG for, how many lots was that originally, what we have now? And then what's the conversion to again? Can you remind me?
I believe it's 23.
To how many?
11.
11, okay. So I, and I guess this is sort of a similar, you know, it's kind of a situation. It's a little bit like Shelter Cove in that there was some subdivisions that occurred and the lots are, some of them are basically undevelopable from a residential perspective, too small, maybe they can't perk or whatever it is. There seems to be some issues related to that. But also, I mean, with our general plan change, you know, at our general ag, basically, it's interesting because in, for most places, moving from residential to general ag would be considered a downzone. But because we principally permitted residential development on ag, this is actually an upzone. So this is actually an expansion of potential uses for this site. And in some ways, I have, do have some concerns in that now what will... This is also in response to, I think there have been some abatement issues in here where, where there'd been some unpermitted cannabis activities in here because they didn't conform with the zoning in this space. So what we're, what's really being asked is an expansion of uses in this space. So my concerns with that are a couple. One is, you know, this appears to be almost, in its density, could become almost a sort of a cannabis business park to, to a certain extent because you have some fairly smaller lots that could then be converted to commercial cannabis use. So that's one, and I think, you know, the community, we need to take a look at that and if this is really an appropriate space for that to happen. And one of the things I'm concerned about is, quite frankly, the view shed issue. I mean, you're looking, we, we keep talking about the entrance to Humboldt County, and this is why I think it should, you know, Humboldt County might have an interest in this, just like going through Richardson's Grove. You come around the corner and this is where you enter Bimbo, and this is the hillside you see. And so without some understanding and planning of what may happen here, we could see, you know, just a bunch of greenhouses being popped up there. I mean, it really could, you'll really see it. It's not just on the flats. It's like on a hill and in sort of in everybody's, you know, view shed. I mean, quite frankly, the public. So I do have a concern with relationship to that. I think, you know, some of those things could be addressed if there was a proposed Q-zone for some sort of view shed mitigations. We've talked about that in the past, especially when we're talking about our scenic highways. This is, I consider a scenic highway. I hope everyone considers 101 through Humboldt County a scenic highway at some. And I think we should be moving in that direction, and I think this could have a significant impact. And thirdly, you know, I, this subdivision, it's amazing. I don't even know how it happened, but this subdivision was created without a fire district. And now we're considering, really, although reducing the number of lots, expanding the potential activity, and quite frankly, these lots, you know, these lots are, the value of them is based on their ability to generate income. And certainly cannabis is the number one issue in terms of their ability to generate income. And from this perspective, the value of the lots would definitely change if they have that capacity. But I really have this concern about, this is not in a fire district. So we need to use these opportunities when we're asking for these sort of landscape scale changes to really address that issue, that it's, it's not fair to the community, to the residents of Redway and Garberville to pay, to respond to emergencies and/or fire issues in those areas. And also, quite frankly, the county. And we're, you know, as we see, it's not a, it's not a net positive from a, from a, from a money perspect, from the, from the, from delivery of services to, you know, what is, 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 is generated in these spaces in, from a county perspective and in protecting the interests of all county residents and, and our, the values, you know, and those sorts of things. I have those concerns. And so that's, that's my list. And, and for that reason, I'll, I'll be voting no for this until those, until a proposal is brought back to address those issues. Thank you.
At the moment, not seeing a hand. I'd like to ask that Director Ford, my understanding with the petition is that it's basically a move ahead to start the process and identify and deal with certain issues such as Supervisor Wilson brought up. And I could be completely wrong. But can you kind of ident, you know, tell us a bit, us a little bit about how this would go from here if it's approved? Because that's my basic understanding. And you might want to turn your, there you go. And you might want to turn your, there you go. Where'd you go? Director Ford?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got sidetracked there for a minute. Could I?
Oh, the question, um, my question was, my understanding in the past is that the petition, these types of things are basically to start the process. And it would be to actually work on some of the issues such as Supervisor Wilson brought to the fore, some things that he is concerned about, and I think are valid concerns. But would those things not be looked at during the phase of moving forward if we did vote yes on the petition today?
Yes, if, if you voted yes, we would take all the comments that have been made here today, and we would address those through the process. So it really is, I'm sorry.
No, I said, but that process, it would then come back to us, at least.
Yeah, it would come back, have the environmental review done. It would go back to the planning commission, then the planning commission would make a recommendation to the board on what they think should be done.
All right, thank you, Director Ford. Any supervisors have any questions? Supervisor Bone?
Well, I'm kind of following along the same trails here. It, this, this is, if I remember right, this is the preliminary part to see if it can move farther for the property owner, I think, who's, I think this is multi-generational property, isn't it? It's, it's multi-generational property. And then the other thing is that, and I, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know it back and forth, but I've been up there enough. A lot of the concerns, I think Supervisor Wilson have, is he said it right, it's on hillside. So I don't think you'd ever hit the slope. I don't think you'd ever hit the slope recommendations to do cannabis on a lot of it. But I think a lot of it, it sounds like they're trying to take it to, I mean, I don't think it's all about cannabis. It might be, but it, I think what they're trying to do is, is as they break it down to eleven parcels, they want to have parcels they can actually build on, because out of the twenty-three parcels, you can't build on every one of them. And there is some demand for people in that. And I do know that they are, look, I think in the past according to fire count, they're, they are looking at, trying to get into a district. So this is so preliminary, I kind of have a hard time. I'll be voting for it because I have a hard time voting against something when they're just knocking on the door and says, nope, we don't want to hear it, when I actually want to hear more to see if they can answer the same questions I had with Supervisor Wilson. But to stop it at the door sends out that great message of, nah, not here. And I think, not here because of, or here because you need to do this, and then we get a good project. So that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Thank you Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning, Director Ford, are you there?
Good morning, I am, yes.
Okay, I, I have several questions. When you reduce, first of all, the AG, switching from residential to AG doesn't limit just to ag. It could also be residential and ag, correct? So you could have a home on those eleven parcels?
There is, correct.
Okay, with that being said, you're reducing from twenty-three residential parcels that could have possibly housed twenty-three homes?
Yeah, that is true.
So you would be reducing the fire load because you would now only have eleven and maybe a mother-in-law unit. So I'm wondering also, as far as the cannabis goes, while it does state that it is an interest, it would still have to go through the process and the public process, correct?
It would have to go through the permitting process, and frankly, very little of that property has slopes less than fifteen percent.
And when I was looking at the maps, the flat area that possibly you would put cannabis, I don't believe, and I'm very familiar with the Bimbo area, I grew up there. They're not, it's not viewable from the freeway. Also, currently, there are two permits in that area that are in the view shed that are already existing, I believe. Just trying to clarify.
That is true.
Okay. And then also, I, is it my understanding that possibly, even though they have these twenty-three subdivisions, that going forward, because they're not in LAFCO, is causing an issue, and so they're trying to utilize this property?
Yeah, there, there is the fire district issue. There's also water and sewer issues on the individual lots, which the homes that really can't be developed on those single-family lots that have been developed out there because of the lack of water and the lack of the ability to provide septic. So there, there are a multitude of constraints there.
So one last question, thank you for those. Just switching it to AG, it doesn't mean it just could be cannabis, it could be grapes, right? It just means that it, it multiuses the property.
It, it could be any kind of agricultural use, that's right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying for me.
Great, and Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good discussion and great to have you on board, Supervisor Bushnell. The, I guess my big concern is that we do our due diligence to try and help, uh, help make sure that the developer doesn't waste a lot of time and money. You know, it's projects like this that come forward initially like this. And I agree that, you know, there's some good movement here towards improvement of what's going on there. First, I have a question, Director Ford, do you know when this subdivision was actually originally approved to these little bitty lots up there? You're muted, John.
I, I'm sorry, no, I do not. Can you not hear me?
Okay. No, just, we heard that final, heard that response. So you're not sure when it was originally approved? I mean, it does look a lot like the Shelter Cove lots and, and West Haven. West Haven in the nineteen-sixties, on, on paper, was broken up into a huge amount of small little lots that ultimately never got developed for all the reasons that this has problems to, physical constraints, sewage, act, other things. So, you know, I, I guess my biggest concern is, you know, when we see things like this come forward, I agree with Supervisor Bone that, let's see more, let's see more information. But what I don't want to see is that we're giving just a wide-open green light that says, well, sure, this, this sounds good. Go ahead and invest, you know, a hundred thousand dollars into permitting this thing, or whatever it might cost, thirty thousand, forty thousand. You know, we see this a lot where people then invest all that money into going forward only to then find out that the neighborhood has all kinds of concerns. I haven't heard anything about the neighborhood here, and I'm not sure, what was the noticing? Was there any neighborhood noticing for this that's on our agenda today?
No.
No, because it's not required.
Not really, this is really just, this, there is no action being taken. This, this is not a public hearing. This is just authorized staff in the process.
No, I, I understand that, it's not a discretionary action. Yeah, you're breaking up the logic on there, but as I understood it, you're, you're pointing out that this is not a discretionary action here today. It is simply a petition to see whether or not the board is supportive of moving forward with, with the project in terms of the environmental work and things like that, correct?
Correct.
And I, I- So I guess what I'm concerned about is that we see these kinds of things often where, okay, it's not a discretionary act, the neighborhood hasn't received any notice of this potential whatsoever, nor are they allowed, you know, you're not required by law to do that, I get that. But it would seem to me it would be in the developer's best interest to actually have that input upfront right now so that they can better understand, are there going to be neighborhood concerns or not? If there are, what's the significance of those? So that the developer could best direct their consultants and their efforts towards a project that would ultimately happen without a lot of neighborhood pushback or concerns. Because as we've seen over the last five or six months, you know, especially with cannabis projects, which this may or may not be, but it certainly sounds like it is, ultimately designed to help with that. And I have no problem with that. But I guess my concern is that we get way down the road with the developer investing a whole lot of money into something only to find out later that the neighborhood is concerned significantly. And then all that money ends up getting wasted and the project gets cut in half or something else happens to reduce the impact. So I guess that, that concerns me, that, you know, we don't even know what the neighborhood feels about this. And then the developer invests all this money going forward, and then we hear the complaints from the developers saying, whoa, 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 you gave me a green light, and now I've made, I've made all this investment, and I wish I would've known that upfront, you know? So this is a good time to be able to try and talk about those concerns. So I'll share mine with you all, and I'll try to be brief Supervisor Bone, because I see you've got your hand up as well. The history of the subdivision is concerning, that, you know, clearly, there wasn't a lot of looking at this when they broke it up into these little bitty parcels, given that there is that landslide right in the center of this larger area. I appreciate the recommendation here is to go from twenty-three lots to eleven. But given that in the attachment, one of the attachments, it showed a bunch of maps, and it had a comment that fewer than four and a half acres of the thirty-three acres have slopes under thirty percent, right? So, so that means that twenty-nine acres-
Supervisor Madron, I hate to break in, something important for a moment. Director Ford is having connection issues, so he's going to call in. So if you're asking him a question, we probably want to wait till he gets back on unless Cliff is able to handle the question. But I just, then once you have to go through the whole thing and not have anybody to answer it. So please resume.
Thank you Supervisor Bass, Chairwoman. I, I could see that John was having some difficulty. You can hear me okay, though?
So Cliff, can you answer some of those questions in John's absence while we're waiting? Wait, he's back. No, he's frozen.
Yeah. I'd be, I'd be happy to try to answer those. I think Supervisor Madron was still in the process of asking those questions.
Okay, good. I just didn't want anything to get lost while John was missing. All right, continue, Brian Madron, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had my earlier questions answered, and right now I'm just making comments.
Okay.
Comments are that four and a half acres, less than four and a half acres are under thirty percent. Turn that around, what that means is twenty-nine acres of this thirty-three are over thirty percent slopes, right? And I think John mentioned earlier that very few of the, those four and a half acres are under fifteen percent, which is a requirement for a number of things, including cannabis cultivation and other kinds of things. So it's really steep property, it's got an active landslide on it. And I guess, you know, it, it, from, from my cursory view, and I, I've actually consulted with people up, you know, on these properties in the past, back though, probably thirty years ago, nothing related to cannabis whatsoever, just landscaping plans. And the, the thing about this, it, it seems like it really ought to probably be more like four parcels or, or something, because if you only got four and a half acres of flat, it'd be nice, not flat, less than thirty percent, it'd be nice to have some flat ground on your parcel, you know? So it looks like the terrain actually really only lends itself to much fewer parcels than eleven, so that concerns me a lot. And it was also noted in the staff report that this is kind of following the precedent of what the board did, I think it was a month and a half, two months ago, on the Bimbo properties where we rezoned, approved the rezoning from a C one to a C two, again, related to cannabis operations. But that had no general plan amendments whatsoever. And as we know, in the staff report, there is that comment that in order to make a general plan amendment, it really does need to be in the public's interest, and, and proven that that is, is the case. And I recognize that those kinds of things would happen once this petition's approved and the developers work with the county on the environmental work and the project description and things like that. But it just seems to me we're getting a little bit out in front of ourselves. And as a board member, I, I just don't think I can support eleven lots. I think maybe four lots, five lots. I just don't want to send the wrong message to the, to the developer who spends a whole lot of money and then comes back and the neighborhood's like, whoa, wait a minute. Or even in the environmental work, the county itself says eleven lots is way too much, you know, given the, the steepness, the hazards, the slope instabilities, et cetera. So I guess that's my caution here, is I'm really trying to send a message that I think I could ultimately support later, rather than go along with something that I definitely don't support at this level right now and have the developer waste a lot of money on something like that. So those would be my concerns, no other real questions there. But I appreciated your efforts, Chairwoman Bass, to, to help me out with John's difficulty there.
And I believe John is on the phone now, but-
That's all.
And the, everyone, I'm going to actually move on to public comment. We do have one person in the queue, and that is, I believe, Thomas. So welcome, Thomas.
Good morning, Thomas Holder here. Yes, no one in the, in the community was noticed. I put it up in a neighborhood watch this morning, there's some concerns out there about it. I bought my house in Bimbo in two thousand and six. So if you approve this even going through, what you're, the message I'm getting from you as the county is to go do a bunch of illegal flats and pushes on steep hillsides, remove trees, and develop the heck out of it. I might get abated, but then later you're going to reward me and change my zoning appropriately. That's the message I get as a developer mindset if you go through with this. And that's challenging to me, because with the abatement process and all of the other things the county has done to try to get people to follow the rules, it, it just baffles me. And then if you look at the CEO of Bimbo Properties, Inc., they also sit on the advisory planning, or at the time that I was building the shop, stood on the advisory planning for Bimbo, because you have to go through extra permit process to build anything in Bimbo, so they would know the rules better. So I'm just, I'm really, really troubled and concerned. So if you move forward on this, I guess I'm going to look for a larger parcel of land and just start, I guess it's okay to illegally develop because, you know, you're going to reward me later on. The thing, if you do this rezoning also, you consider people that were abated on TPZ parcels, are you going to allow them to rezone so that way they can get in the cannabis market? That's, that's a big question. And also, when you were abating Bimbo Property, Inc.'s properties, you missed quite a few parcels. The county is well aware of them, nothing's ever happened. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. And I believe our next caller and last one in line at this moment is Kent, welcome, Kent.
Yes, this is a, a real interesting one. Maybe I missed reading here, according to the staff report, it's not twenty-three parcels, it's twenty-five parcels involving thirty-three acres in Bimbo, and that the applicants indicates the parcel will be reconfigured into eleven parcels and will eliminate multiple zoning within a parcel. Well, having been on a planning commission, there is, there only is one reason, and one reason only, to do a general plan thing, and that's to allow the agricultural general, which allows cannabis. Otherwise, it's a very simple process to go ahead and combine those lots, reconfigure your subdivision by doing lot-line adjustments, combine those lots, without having to spend any of the time to go through that process. I don't, I don't even know if you need an EIR to do that, I really, really don't know. But to downsize that to what sounds like appropriate, maybe two or three parcels that are buildable, can be done without any of this other stuff. So the other problem I have is your agricultural general. Agriculture, when I sat around through all the meetings, which some of you folks did for the general plan, agricultural usage was supposed to be on, what, is it forty or sixty acres? Well, you have a total problem because agricultural is no longer the same. Cannabis wasn't in your general plan. Your general plan has never been amended to even allow for what is now defined as agricultural use. So according to their general plan, I don't think any of these things are actually following the letter of the intent of what the general plan was. So as far as, as far as notification things, I would go ahead and encourage that person and just go ahead and strike out the part two agricultural general. I guess I'd just encourage him to go ahead and, and do a lot-line adjustment and combine some lots, that's pretty simple. So I think being fair to all developers, this kind of thing should be notified. Apparently, Thomas and I are the only ones, maybe someone else will comment, who are tracking these things for the public. And that's why when Thomas speaks or someone takes the time to speak, I really would like you to understand he's frequently speaking for twenty-five or thirty people that aren't tracking these things. So, uh, great job, Thomas, and it's your neighborhood down there. I'm really distressed that there are already greenhouses in this, in the viewscape, as, as mentioned by Supervisor- as mentioned by Supervisor Bushnell there. That should have never happened. The, we were supposed to have, have those things not happening. That was part of the general plan, I thought. The viewscape's were to be protected. So I strongly support what Supervisor Madron and, and Mike Wilson, Supervisor Wilson there, are saying. And I think to be fair to everybody in this, I would not even move this forward at this time. I would, I would have them bring it back and maybe get some better input so you're not wasting the development, developers' time and the public. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
And thank you, Kent. And I see no other hands raised from the speakers. Oh, wait, sorry, lady, I'm just caught in time, Dottie. So yes, Dottie, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Hi. So I'm really puzzled about this comment and what's going on with the cannabis. I personally don't grow cannabis. But so many people in this area have grown cannabis for decades. And now people are talking about if they haven't done it, then they shouldn't be able to do it or whatever. And who's being rewarded? Everybody that is growing cannabis practically that I know is rewarded because they grew cannabis in the past when they weren't supposed to. So that whole comment about, about rewarding somebody for doing something wrong, I don't get at all. So just for the record, it would be really great if somehow there could be some understanding as to if we're really promoting cannabis in Humboldt County. And if so, how we're doing it to be fair and to see that people have the opportunity and not compete with one another and turn in their neighbors for, you know, things and whatever. There must be a way that, in a harmonious fashion, that everybody can have equal opportunities to do this if this is what Humboldt County is all about. And everybody that's involved in it, I think, probably has been involved in it when it wasn't legal. So are we rewarding some people that did things when it wasn't legal? Yes, we are. But they believed in it, and that's fine, and I don't have a problem with that. But the reality is that, yes, everybody is being rewarded that knows a lot about it because we're doing it when it wasn't legal. So thanks very much.
All right. And thank you, Dottie. We'll make one more, let's see if there's anybody's called in. All right. Supervisor Bone, I believe I saw your hand first, and then Supervisor Wilson.
I know we like to call them developers because they're big bad. But I don't see a developer on here, I see an applicant. And I see an applicant going forward, and I, and I really appreciate everybody looking out for the applicant. But I think, like I said, he's multi-generational, and I, and I think what he's doing is he's testing the waters just as much as we test drive a car or anything else. He wants to see what's available. Now, this may very well come through that it's only good for four lots. I think that may be where he's headed, instead of going for it, because it may be six lots by goes. And if, if, if five acres out of 33 are available, maybe they've got a way to figure out whether there's buildable and allower and it'll perk and do those things. I don't know if he's going to drop the count down, the impacts are less. But I just think, I know subliminally, we like to call them developers because it makes me sound so evil. But I think it's just a landowner that's trying to, probably, he's getting on in years, sorry. But, and he's probably trying to get return on his family's investment. And this, you know, i.e. build the golf course, i.e. build an RV park, i.e. so forth and so on. So I don't know if we can sit here just because we know so much and did landscaping plans 30 years ago down there and things like that. I don't know if we can't let him go through the process of seeing what his property is available. And that's, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but I think that's what he's reaching out for to see what the availability. His availability with all the monies he's already spent with doing all the mapping that he's fully aware of that he's spending is 11 parcels from 23. Now, when, when, you know, when it hits the road, it may be, hey, the most you can get and not beat the slopes and make buildable and everything else. You know, I think you can only go to six, four, as was mentioned by someone else. But I think that's what we, I think what we're trying to do, he's paying us to assist him in getting to where he wants to be. And what we're doing is saying, we don't want to help you keep it the same because we feel that this, this, and this. We're not approving anything. We're just letting the process go forward. And if we have no faith in the process, I'm, 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 I've got an issue with that because I've got a faith in the process that it's, I truly believe, I don't think he's going to get 11 out of this. And, and looking at this and knowing the area and the slopes and everything else. But that's what's been projected. And as we know, this is, this is a give and take. So with that, I think, like, damn, there's still some part of me that says, God, don't they have a right to ask what they can do with their property and get it there? And that's, that's all I see. So I just, you know, and I, I know we know better than he does. But the applicant feels, since it's been in their family for 100 years, that they're still having to pay taxes. It's the only way they can make money off it is by the, with the way we've created as a subdivision, so.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. I think we got the gist, Supervisor Wilson. We can't hear you.
I had to find, find the microphone button there. Yeah, I think what Supervisor Bone says is correct. This is the process, though. This is, we're doing it right now. This is, this is the applicant asking for a comment, asking the board whether the board thinks this is, this application is adequate or ripe, I would say, for moving forward, whether it's got enough to, to, to just even, you know, start the process, whether we want to invest our staff time into this. Because even though they pay for it, the staff still has to spend time on it. And, and there's a lot of concerns about whether staff, you know, is, you know, whether we have enough staff to do the work that needs to be done anyway. So do, do I want to see no change on this space? That's no, no. I think there's changes required and needed. And I think that the applicant is, is, has a right to ask for that. And I think that's absolutely part of this. And I'm grateful that this is part of the process of bringing it forward in this way so that we can have these discussions and so the public can see those things. I still have a pretty, you know, a concern with relationship to, I know there has been efforts. I was on the FIRE Subcommittee, and I know that there's been efforts to try and bring this neighborhood into a district. It would be, it's, I think it's imperative from that perspective. You know, to be, to be frank, I could go either way in terms of whether or not, you know, my voting to move this forward or not to be, because I think the points have been made. And I think that, I think that the applicant has heard them. I think planning staff has heard them. I think that, you know, having multiple uses on land is a good thing. I want to see that happen. I think that's, that is a thing. But we do have this very unique situation with cannabis that does, is, you know, changing landscapes in different ways. And I think it's a concern that is of some value. I don't, I don't have any moral issues with regards to cannabis from that perspective. I just, it's, this is a landscape issue from, and I want to make sure that we're doing our job for all the citizens of Humboldt County. So I, you know, I'm not going to be mad if we, if the, if the board decides to vote this forward or not. I think, I think we've done our job. Thanks.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Wilson. And I'd like to chime in at this point. You know how hard it is being chaired, just kind of waiting to talk. But it's a good thing because I got to hear everything. You know, my position is, I mean, I hear the concerns. I've also been through, you know, in the last 20 years in two different agencies, this kind of a process where petitions brought forward. And I have learned that it does not always end up going in the way the developer or whomever it is. You know, what comes forward can still be turned down. So I, I have less angst on that. I think it's, I think this one does have uphill battles. I think we brought those forward, and I think that's worthwhile. You know, this is the applicant's choice. They want to spend the money on it because it could be substantial. And yes, I do believe, along with Supervisor Madron, that it's really important that they do reach out to the community and the neighbors. Because as we see often, that seems to be the piece that's missing that causes the biggest problems when it does come back to us in some type of finished form. So this doesn't create an entitlement. And, you know, quite frankly, I'm perfectly fine voting to move this forward. If there was a motion to do that or a motion against that, I think we're at that point where someone can make a motion now and we can move on for the rest of our day after this item. Anyone want to make a motion? Okay.
I'm going to make-
Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi, Virginia. I'd like to make a motion to move this forward. You know, this applicant did this in February of 2020, and it's been a year almost. And his dad is the one that did this subdivision. And I think he's just trying to find out what he can do with that. And so I'm going to make, make the motion to move this forward to see what is available to him.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to proof staff recommendation. We certainly can have more comment if anyone believes that there's something that they did not get the chance to say. Seeing no hands go up, I ask Ryan to please do a roll call vote.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Supervisor Wilson?
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes five oh.
All right. So it's getting close to 11, but our next item, I believe, is the appointment of board members to various commissions and boards. So if everyone's fine with that, I think we can move forward with that one and then take a break at that point. Nobody shaking their head? Are you nodding? We're going to go with that one then. So this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Hayes to please provide the staff report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. The item before you today is the board's consideration of appointments to board members to various boards, commissions, and committees for the 2021 calendar year. Each year, your board takes up a review of your boards and commissions in those seats that each of you are appointed to sit on. Attached to your agenda item is the adoption of slate for 2020, which you can use as a basis to begin your discussion for making appointments for the next calendar year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, Kathy. So if it's all right with the board, my plan is just to start going down the different committees. And we can see there are certain ones that we obviously will have to just because we have a new supervisor, Supervisor Madron. I'll take your question first.
Oh, it was just a bit of information. I spent quite a bit of time on this last night. And so what I did is I made a little chart for myself identifying which board member was appointed as a member of a particular committee or an alternate or an alternate two. And so I just totaled up those numbers just to kind of give us an overview. Obviously, things are changing with Supervisor Fennell leaving and Supervisor Bushnell coming on board. But Supervisor Fennell had a total of 11 appointments, Bass nine appointments, Bone 14 appointments, and Wilson and Madron both had 20 appointments in this list. And I could break it down further, but I don't think we need to. I just wanted to give a kind of a context for our discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you Supervisor Madron. So with that, I will start going down the list and we'll see where it goes. If we have any ones that are particularly sticky, we'll have more time on that. So currently on the air quality management district, we do have Supervisors Bone and Wilson as members, and Madron as alternate. Is there a desire in that group to do something differently or add change?
I'm good with it. I enjoy that board and certainly has impact in the district.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I think I'm the longest-serving member, I think. And I, and I do know that we're about right, Liz. We, we, there's a distinct opportunity, we're going to lose another one of our Title V's. So I'd, I'd like to stay on that because things are, things are changing a little bit.
All right. Supervisor Madron, do you want to stay as alternate or would you like someone else?
That all works.
You're fine? Yeah?
No, that works fine for me. I appreciate you being an alternate. And I want to see if we can get our committee to work on the same FIRE restrictions at Ferndale as County law. Anyway, thank you.
So we won't have any conversations on what you might do when you're there. We'll just have that conversation when we're, when it's on our agenda. So everyone, agency on aging, Supervisor Bone is the alternate. Supervisor Fennell is no longer on the team. So Supervisor Bone, do you want to go to regular? Who has interest in joining this?
I served on that for four years already, so I-
Okay, so.
I know there's other, go ahead.
And, well, okay, Rex, and then Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I, as the oldest member of our board, I would be willing to step up and serve as the member for Area One on Aging.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So thank you both for working on that. HCOG, you know, in the past, it's been the president or the president designated me the president. Oh, my gosh, I'm not sure if that's a demotion or promotion. But the chair's decision, basically. And I, I would like, I was on lap, not lap, well, that too, but HCOG in the past, I've enjoyed the work. Very interested in it. And I would like to go on as, as the chair as being the member for HCOG. But that still leaves an opening either for, well, and Supervisor Wilson, I believe you are still interested in HCOG or Supervisor Madron? How?
Well, I don't mind, I don't mind the remaining the alternate. If, but I, I'd be okay if you want to switch with Steve. He could be the alternate, I'd be the second alternate, be fine with me.
Well, I just-
That works for me.
I want, hello.
Yes, Supervisor Bone?
I was just, are you willing to serve a couple of years at that and everything? Because I think continuity on that, because a lot of mayors are just mayors, they serve three or four years. And I know we switched when Ryan was chair and kept him on it for another couple of years because we had continuity. Because by the time you get your feet wet, you're replaced, so I don't know.
I've, I've, I've done it in the past. I don't have a problem staying on. Actually, I was on for four years as mayor, so I also get that.
Fully, that's my point. I would love to see that continuity continue.
Yes. No, and as long as I'm still on the board, I'm perfectly fine, you know?
Thank you.
A day-to-day, you never know what could happen in life.
Twenty years.
Yeah. All right, so, so Kathy's clear on that. I would be the member, Supervisor Wilson would become the second alternate, and Supervisor Madron the first alternate. Is that correct? You make this a lot harder.
Alternate, second alternate. Your alternate is the first alternate.
You're absolutely correct, Supervisor Bone.
I know you've been doing this a long time, but.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, I very much would like to move up to alternate. And just to let you know, you know, if you can't make it, let me know in advance. I think we all have that obligation to each other to let our alternates know in a timely fashion when we can so that the county's represented. And I do have a lot of transportation planning expertise, so I look forward to supporting you in that role. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to California Cannabis Authority. And I know Treasurer, Taxpayer Bartholomew is the alternate. My, I've heard there are specific requirements for this one or, and I'm wondering if Kathy has that information regarding, my understanding is you'd have to sign something saying you have no ties to the industry. And I do not know if that's true. That was, I've not been able to get that confirmed. So I'd like to reach out to Kathy to see if you have any information on what the parameters for that committee are.
Through the chair, this is a state appointment, a state cannabis advisory is a state appointment. And your board makes a representative appointment to that board. I'm not aware of the specific qualifications, but I could certainly find out and bring that information back to you.
Okay. So I mean, we can move forward with it today or Supervisor Bone? You got a question?
What, is California Cannabis Authority a state or is it a CSAC appointment?
There are representatives from the, from CSAC on this advisory board.
All right.
All right. Um, so, yes Supervisor Madron?
Well, as the most recent board member that working on the cannabis ad hoc with Supervisor Fennell, I would be very happy to step up and represent the board. I would be very happy to step up and represent the board on the cannabis authority. I have no ties to the commercial cannabis industry in any way, never have, never have been a commercial grower and be happy to represent because I think I bring a lot of knowledge base to the, to the effort and helping our community, especially small farmers and others. So be happy to serve if that's at the pleasure of the board.
I, ditto.
Ditto, you'd be happy to serve or you would support?
Yeah, and I don't have ties and all that other stuff.
Well, I would like to butt in because I would be happy to serve also, but I do have ties, so we have to have clarification.
Yep. Then, hearing this conversation, is there a way, you know, go through Kathy, that perhaps this one could come back at the next meeting with the full information on what requirements there may or may not be since we're talking about and or a group that we not, we are not in control of? So is that possible?
Yep.
All right, so we'll visit that one again next week so we don't get too tangled up. Um, the cannabis ad hoc committee, Supervisor Madron is a member and we need an additional member?
I.
Yes, Supervisor.
Actually, we ought to disband. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Supervisor Bushnell.
You want to disband? Okay, first Supervisor Bushnell and then we'll go back to Supervisor Madron.
I was just going to say I'm interested in this, but I would like to hear what Supervisor Madron has to say.
Right, and because ad hoc, yes, Supervisor Madron, I think you have some clarifications to make on that. Please do.
Yeah, my rec, my recommendation to the board would be that we currently disband ad hoc. The thing about ad hoc Supervisor Bushnell is that they're not supposed to be ongoing. If they're on an ongoing committee like Measure Z, then they're subject to the Brown Act. We have to post meetings. We have to do all these other conditions to be able to do that. So typically with ad hocs, they only last a year or so. And then we disband them. And then if there is a need to create a new ad hoc after some period of, of, you know, letting it settle, we can form the new ad hoc and I think you'd be a great member to that. I'd love to work with you on that. I am interested in being on that again, but I do think following process, we ought to probably disband this one. We did a lot of great work with John Ford and his staff, Director Ford this last year that allowed us to bring forward the Small Cannabis Farmer Ordinance as well as increasing personal use. And we also were able to give direction and the department is coming back to us in the near future with some discussion about the triple R program and a number of other items that we identified in the ad hoc. So I think we did some good work there. So my recommendation is let's disband and then revisit this in a few months. And I think it would be great to continue to have an ad hoc, but we need to have this, this, this gap in time.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. CIO Nelson is on and then Supervisor Wilson has a question. Um, yeah, Amy for some clarification.
Thank you, Supervisor, Chair Bass. I would just like to make a request that your board consider reconvening the cannabis ad hoc because there is a regional group that would like to meet Mendocino, Trinity County, Sonoma County. And so I think that it would be appropriate for your board to appoint two board members so you could participate in that regional group.
Right, thank you, CIO Nelson. Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to, through the chair to CIO Nelson, can, can you bring that back as just an items that has like a short list of, of things that need to be done? I mean, I think what Supervisor Madron's saying is like for an ad hoc, we just, that's one good thing you just mentioned, but maybe two other things. Maybe you could work with Supervisor Madron to bring that back. Or maybe Supervisor Madron could leave the charge on, on putting that as soon as possible on our agenda. Is our next agenda too late to, to do that in terms of the regional thing? Okay, so I guess what I would put out there is that then let's, let's reconvene that ad hoc committee with just the job currently of, of addressing this issue. And can you, can you define it one more time, Amy, so that we can clarify what that is?
This was regional collaboration around cannabis issues that were consistent across Northern California counties.
And is that, is that just an ongoing thing or is that, does that have some sort of sunset date?
I think you could sunset it at a year.
Okay, let's do that. So whatever that is, put it in the report. Thank you. And let's reconvene it with Steve and Michelle.
I, I would like to be on that before we go. I wanted to be on it a year ago. I do have, you know, when I'm doing Appalachians, we're doing a lot in the, in my valley and things like that with a lot going forward. So, I mean.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sorry, but.
I didn't mean, I was just jumping in there because I thought people wanted to do.
Sure.
I don't want to do it.
I'm realizing that I shouldn't have thought this would get done by break time. Oh, well, so, so. It'll probably be something best that the people who are interested, kind of if you can, you know, it's not something we generally take to vote. We kind of come to a consensus of what we want to do, so. I don't know the three of you that are interested, how you want to proceed with this. I mean, is there a chance to put an alternate on there if it doesn't go? I don't know if that, that could be another position.
Well, as Steve mentioned, he was on it last year and he got his 2,000, the small farmer and, and saved the small farmers, so. But I think, I think there's more to it as far as, you know, the Appalachians and I think there's a bigger picture to look at. And I think, I think we were doing our best for our small farmer. We still have to worry about the small farmer's neighbors. It's a, it's a big, big picture and it's not just a small farmer. It's a small farmer's neighborhood that we're imposing on. Even 2,000 square feet can be an imposition, so. We need, as we talked earlier, as anybody talk to the neighbors type thing. So I got a lot of confirmation, a lot of contract and I, I don't know how many 2,000 square foot permits have come out from the, from that we passed three months ago or whatever, but. I just, I think I bring a different viewpoint to it. I have, I do seem to get a lot of phone calls from that area, so.
And I know Supervisor Bushnell, you were interested, but knowing it is just an ad hoc for a short period of time, do you, you guys want to continue this conversation with?
Well, my district is very prominent, you know, for cannabis, not that that is what that is all about, but I also have a lot of different views, also being a new board member. I would like to sit on this ad hoc committee. I think that it is pertinent to my district and I think I have a lot of information to add.
Okay, um, I don't know if this is something towards resolution or not. Perhaps when we get the item next week of the California Cannabis Authority and we find out what the regulations are, perhaps that will provide an opening as well. So. Let's just, I'm gonna pass this one up for the moment and just try to think about how else to come back to this because usually we don't have to do too much wrestling about these things, but. I'm gonna move on and then we'll come back. The CSAC is already, we did that earlier this year or last year, late last year. We're now on the Caltrans Northern District Advisory Committee. We have Supervisor Wilson as the chair. And we need an alternate or Supervisor Wilson wants to no longer be involved, then we'll add somebody else. Yes, Supervisor.
And I guess I should read this. I thought I was still on it because I attended quite a few of the meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, so that means you'd like to be on it then.
Well, I was, I was going, I was going to all of them except unless I had a meeting here. I know I had a couple recently where I had meetings cross ankle, but, and I came in late and I didn't know what, I didn't know Supervisor Wilson was, had you been attending the meetings?
I have not because I have not received any notices for the meetings.
Okay, I get, I get, okay, so.
I got Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Madron with their hands up. And.
I wanted to ask a question. As long as there's not more than two board members, are board members allowed to attend these meetings just for information? Like for myself to update myself on these, on these committees?
Jefferson?
Well, technically, a third board member could attend, but I would recommend against it because it's very hard not to get involved in a, in a discussion.
Just, Jefferson, just so you know, this is not a decision-making body. This is a quarterly report on what Caltrans is up to in Humboldt County, Del Norte, Mendocino County, District One, basically. We don't have any input whatsoever. So all it is is informational. Anybody can zoom in if they want. Just so you know, what we are is just boots on the ground to discuss any issues that we may have in our areas having to deal with Caltrans issues. That's why I've been, that's why I've been going. I just, I didn't know I was off of it and I guess Mike didn't know he was on it, but it's very informational.
Supervisor Madron? Wait, I know you're wrong. I was wrong. Supervisor Wilson then Madron, I think. I apologize. Okay, Supervisor Madron?
No problem. I, I think Supervisor Bone is correct. I think there's an error here. The very last meeting of this group, Supervisor Bone and I attended, we were the appointed members for this and we haven't met since COVID. But it was about a year ago, I believe, that Supervisor Bone and I met with Caltrans at their offices. So I think there's, we need to go back and check the records, but I believe that he and I were the appointees to this particular committee.
Yeah, the meeting.
Excuse me, Supervisor Bone. Excuse me. We can do clarification, but I think we're actually really getting close. We don't have to talk this one to death. I think there's a couple of people that are interested in this, so can I just see, you know, Supervisor Bone, are you still, are you interested in still going and Supervisor? Was that a yes?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Madron and Wilson, are you, would that disappoint you if you're not on it?
I'm not disappointed if I'm not on it.
And pardon me, Supervisor Madron, I do want to ask Supervisor Bushnell if she has interest in this because her hand's up.
I'm sorry, I didn't know my hand was up. No, I do not have interest.
Okay, thank you.
I would advise that Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Bone.
Okay. And which one, Bone, member, Madron, alternate?
I'll be the member.
What, what?
I'll be the member.
Okay, and Supervisor Madron, the, Madron, sorry, the alternate? Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. And I did want to hear Supervisor Bone's clarification because I may be confused about the two different meetings.
We actually, I was the alternate and stepped up for Ryan on the last chance grade and what we were there meeting with Matty Olley and Madam and those guys. We were getting the update on the last chance grade. It had nothing to do with North Deal when we were up there.
Okay.
And that was on just a, because we have a subcommittee on the North Deal and that was just, I mean, a subcommittee on the last chance grade and that's exactly what that was, which you are now on, I believe.
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification, Supervisor Bone.
Okay, so we'll move on. Convention and Visitors Bureau, currently we have Scott Adair from Economic Development as a member and Supervisor Madron is the alternate. Is there an interest to change that?
I would be interested if, unless Steve, our Mr., our Supervisor Madron wants to say, I just have a lot of interest in this area.
And Supervisor Wilson, did you have your hand up? No.
I don't, I don't want to be on this one, so.
Supervisor Madron, would you be willing to kind of switch it up and let Supervisor Bushnell be the person on this?
Absolutely. I think it'd be a great mix with her chamber experience and other things. And just to let you know, Scott Adair is, makes every meeting, so I never got called upon. But I think you'd be a great alternate and a great member, frankly, Michelle, or Supervisor Bushnell. So thank you.
Right, thank you. We'll move to the next one then. The Cork County Facilities Group, it's a group that doesn't meet very often. Currently we have Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bone.
I think we're still, you know, things got kind of put a little bit on hold because of COVID, but I think having some continuity in that would be good, so I volunteer to continue.
Okay, and Supervisor Bone, are you still interested?
I'm fine.
Okay. The Disaster Council, really that consists of the chair and then we have the vice chair, I suspect, is the, looks like the member also. I'm not sure if that is the normal policy. I know the chair is on there, so is there any, I don't think there's any reason to change that one, except other than add myself as the chair and Supervisor Wilson?
Good band name. A good band name.
Okay. Oh, let me see. Il Russian River Joint Powers Commission, currently Rex is the alternate. Rex, do you want to move up to the, to the regular member since you've been alternate?
Yep, that's fine. And then I'd suggest Michelle be the alternate.
Is that a curve and Michelle's okay with that? Okay, good. All right, there we go. Reddick Coast Energy Authority, Mike is the alternate Supervisor, another spot is open. And Mike could need to go though. Who's interested? Are there two of you that are interested?
I'm interested in being the member for sure, so. Been to a few meetings this year and been following along, so be happy to step up to the next level.
Okay, and I saw Supervisor Bone and Bushnell. I would say the alternate is what it would be for since Supervisor Wilson was alternate in the past. So between the two of you, it looks like there's interest. Michelle?
I just have a question again. As being a new supervisor, my interest is to gain knowledge. So once again, I'm fine with Rex or Supervisor Bone being the alternate, but. Rex, Rex. I just want to know if at times I can attend the meetings to gain knowledge. That's what I want to know. And I didn't get clear, I didn't understand, I didn't get clear yes or no.
I think, and I'll fill in, I'm not the attorney and surely Jefferson can jump in here. Part of the problem, because we did this back, I remember when McKay Forest was kicking off and they had all this in the audience. But only two were able to be involved and it's just, to me, it's just a very tricky thing. If you, if you're there and you listen and you don't take part in the conversation, you know, perhaps that would pass muster with County Council because I think it is important to be able to see how the different groups meet because how do you know what you might be interested in in the future? But I would say it just has to be, you know, really careful. So that might be something to talk on. Yes, Supervisor Wilson offline?
Yeah, and, and the attorney can, you know, Jefferson, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, basically, you know, the, the idea is that no more than two people have this sort of interaction in that space. A lot of these meetings, because they're on Zoom right now, you could, and a lot of them are being recorded, you could watch them after the fact and, and risk, you know, as if you were there and probably even a more convenient time to do that. So there is, there is always that often because those are, those are public things. And, and Jefferson, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we, we sometimes as supervisors, there'll be more than two of us that show up to a public meeting and these are public, and if there's publicly noticed meetings versus ad hoc meetings, they're publicly noticed meetings, sometimes we do, there are more than two of us that show up. But we have to be really careful not to say anything that, you know, is, lets anyone of our other commission or supervisors know how we feel about something or communicate in that way becomes, it comes, becomes very tricky, even though it's in a public space and publicly noticed meeting.
I understand the constraints of the Brown Act and my reasoning still stands as for knowledge. And I understand that I could listen to them being recorded. However, hopefully Zoom won't go on forever, so I just wanted to get clarification. And I do understand the Brown Act.
Okay, great. And I apologize if I was.
No, not at all. The information is great because I, I'm, you know, while there is Zoom, I can listen, but, you know, maybe later at a later time, so we can get through this, someone can let me know if I can attend, if I keep my mouth shut.
Count on the accountable buildings league.
For me, that's hard.
I would concur with what Supervisor Wilson said. The issue is if there's, there just can't be any discussion between a quorum of the board. So you could watch and not participate.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Jefferson. So back to, I believe we're still at the RCEA. Supervisor Wilson wanted to become the member and there's interest becoming the alternate from who? Michelle and Rex? Wait, I'm just seeing, moving your pen Supervisor Bone, I'm sorry.
Yes, I mean, yeah, I thought we just had a discussion five minutes ago. Anyway, okay, yes, I will be the alternate.
I just want to make sure that we, we actually got Michelle's question answered. So, all right. And I think we can move on from that one. We're obviously passing, past 11 o'clock. Are you guys okay continuing? Or do you want a quick break? Or are we going to try to hopefully get through these next ones a little more quickly? Okay, keep going, all right. Um, the Eureka City and County Roundtable consists of, Supervisor Bone and myself because they're in our areas, we're in their area. Fire Services Ad Hoc Committee. And it looks like we re-upped that one in September. That's what the red means. So we have Supervisor Fennel and, I mean, is no longer there. We have Supervisor Madron and is there interest in who would like that spot?
I.
Maybe Michelle or, okay, yes Supervisor Bone?
I would go with Michelle. She has more volunteer fire departments than anybody.
Well, that, I was, I was thinking that could make sense.
I would be interested, but if Supervisor Madron wants to, and this is for the whole county, not just our district, so, so.
Yeah, well, the reason I had mentioned Supervisor Madron was from the standpoint that we picked, picked it again in September. So it hadn't been that, that long. So I was assuming he would stay on, but Supervisor Bushnell would like to go on as the second member. Okay, that does make good sense there. All right. First by Humboldt, which is a wonderful committee. And, you know, Supervisor Madron has been the member and I've been alternate. And I, if I, I would like to stay as alternate because this year's a little more, might be a little more challenging to actually get on. And Supervisor Madron has been having a hard time attending the meeting. So I don't know if we want to open this up, if there's others who are interested in the first five? Steve, you still interested?
Yeah, yeah, I, actually I'm not. I continue to have conflicts and I think you attended more meetings than I did this year, which I'm very kind of upset with, not with you, but with my, my schedule because it is a fantastic group. And I think in the past, we've talked about how it's a really wonderful thing for each board member to get a chance to serve and work with them. So if Supervisor Bushnell was interested, I would recommend her. I just am not finding the time. I seem to have all kinds of conflicts on Thursday mornings that I've had a hard time separating out. So I'm more than willing to step aside.
All right, well, I don't know Supervisor Bushnell, if there's interest or if any of the others, like I said, I'd like to stay on as alternate.
Yeah, it conflicts with my coastal commissions, so I can't do that one.
Okay. And Supervisor.
So I currently on Thursdays am at, how long do the meetings last first?
Hour and a half, maybe? Steve?
So I'm in Fortuna that day, but I could, for the second Thursday of each month, I could move the time up. I could, I could do this.
Yeah, and that, that would be great. I think it's one of those that you don't realize is so important until you actually hear more and more about it and what they do in the community. So that would be great.
And I think you'll find that it really has a lot of nexus with Southern Humboldt too. And it's, it is, if, if I wasn't, didn't have a conflict, I, it's a wonderful committee to be a part of.
Thank you. All right, so the Hazardous Hazmat Response Authority. We have Supervisor Wilson as member and Bone as alternate. Is there any interest in changing that? It's all okay? You okay? Bone or Rex, is that okay with you? Okay. Um. Headwaters Subcommittee, I've really enjoyed being on it, but, you know, I have just concern I'm going to have some extra conflict. So I don't know if Supervisor Wilson wants to stay on, but if someone would like to take my place Supervisor Bone?
I'll take your place. I've been on it before.
Okay. All right.
I'll stay.
Head nods. Okay, thank you. The Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee. We have Supervisor Bone and Wilson as members and Madron as alternate. Any need to change that?
They meet every Thursday, every week, so as long as you can.
Twice.
Leave it the same.
Okay, good. And the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. We have Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Wilson as members. Their desire to change, is someone who really went on it?
I'm good with that. I did it for a couple of years.
I'm just the alternate, but if Michelle wants to jump in as alternate, I mean, I'm just saying, I just, I don't, I, I'm, Steve is actually really good at attending these things, I have to say, so.
Good.
But if you're alternate, you can still attend and that's a great way to get to know more about the committees.
I would like to be alternate Supervisor Wilson, if that's okay?
Yes.
Yes, wonderful.
You get them both in the group.
The Climate Facing Coordinating Committee. We've got Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Wilson. Is there a desire to change that? Okay, there are no objections? We'll go on to the Local Agency Formation Commission. I'm interested in staying on. I've been there probably 10 years now, almost 10. And it's one of those committees that takes a long time to actually figure out what they're doing and, but once you do, it's, it's actually very interesting. So we do have an opening for either a member or Supervisor Wilson might want to move up to.
Yeah.
A member, and then we have a room for an alternate. And I think I heard Supervisor Bushnell had been interested in LAFCO. So Supervisor Wilson, do you want to go to the alternate? I mean, regular member?
Yeah, I do. It's been, I've been to a few meetings this, this year and, yeah, it's a good group. I'm happy to, happy to serve.
Okay, and then, and then we'll put Supervisor Bushnell, you're good with alternate? Okay, great. And you get, actually, the alternate there is expected to attend. And it's, so you have an opportunity to learn a lot about that one.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Behavioral Health Board, we have Supervisors Madron and Wilson.
Hang on, Jefferson.
Sorry, I, I got, I'm getting flagged by the County Council.
Can't have three people at some meetings. That'd be the worst one to have three.
No, but not to, it's not to talk. It's to, it's to sit in the audience. It's like, I mean, unless, uh, comes, Jefferson Councilman, what are you? County Council, Billingsley, I need coffee.
Chair, I just wanted to offer a clarification to my last statement. A third member can attend and not participate at a standing committee, but they cannot attend at an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Just in case that wasn't clear, I wanted to get that out.
Okay, got it. And this would be a standing, I mean, this is something that happens and is publicly noticed. And, okay. All right, thanks for the clarification on that. So move on to Behavioral Health Board. I think we were on that. Any desire to change from Supervisor Wilson and Madron?
I'm just the alternate currently. Again, this is one of those that if Michelle is interested in learning about the behavioral health world, this is a good one to sit in occasionally. It's, there's a ton of information. I have to say, I've learned a huge amount about the behavioral health network, really, of all of our providers. And, and so I would recommend it if, if you have the chance.
I'm fine being the alternate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go to the National Association of Counties. Currently it's myself and Supervisor Bone and I'm fine having it stay that way since we both still are involved in our respective state organizations, unless Supervisor Bone wants to change.
No, I'm good as a member because I think I'm still RCRC representing WIR, which is part of a NACO.
Yeah, and I'm on the, I'm on the Rural Action Caucus as a vice chair. So, yeah, I think we both have our NACO ties, if that's okay with everybody? Right. Uh, North Coast EMS, I know Supervisor Bone is a very devoted member to that. So is this something you'd like to?
I, I lost my two other supervisors, so I'm going to be the only standing supervisor. And I've been, and I found out in a one-horse race, I can be nominated Chair. So now I'm Chair of EMS, so if somebody wants it, they can have it. But no, I, probably for consistency. And then we have a new Public Health Officer also. I didn't see the last one there, but the, very much, but Baird used to come every once in a while, so.
We'll keep that then. Okay, North Coast Rail Authority. And it notes that this is a two-year appointment. Supervisor Madron is currently our member and we have an opportunity for an alternate? Supervisor Madron?
So, yeah, through the Chair. Actually, Richard Marks is also a member on that committee appointed by the board. So there are two members and one alternate and Supervisor Fennel was the alternate. So given the railroad goes down through Supervisor Bushnell's district as well as Supervisor Bone's, it might be nice for her to step up as alternate. I know that Richard and I would like to continue to serve and we're in the throes of a lot of major steps with this. But again, I'll stop the commentary. Thank you.
All right, so Supervisor Bushnell, are you comfortable with that as alternate? And Supervisor Bone, you have a question after I hear from Supervisor Bushnell?
That's what I had before and this to Steve. With, I mean, with the rail playing such a big part and the great trail and everything else and that being a part so much in Southern Humboldt, I wonder if you guys would want to flip-flop with, because that's going to affect her district extremely. I don't know. I'm just, just up for conversation.
Well, if I'm hearing incorrectly, you're thinking Supervisor Bushnell would be the member and Supervisor Madron would be the alternate, but it's also in her district being alternate, she can know what's going on. Anyway, Supervisor Madron, in regards to Supervisors, Supervisor Bone's question comment, do you have any changes you're to make?
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, it, it does affect the whole county. It does run down through the Southern Humboldt as well as out to Blue Lake. At any rate, I've got a 35-year history in working on this Great Redwood Trail starting out in Blue Lake on the Annie and Mary. And so with my background and expertise, I would very much like to stay member. But I would love to have Michelle joining in and, and very much would like to get together with you at some point Supervisor Bushnell and just talk about the project, where it's going, what's happening and, and do that. We're in the throes of a lot of big steps right now. I want to maintain that continuity.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, add that while there's some, you know, linear miles for sure in the Southern Humboldt area and I, and it will be important, most of the energy and money and is being, you know, is being focused on connect, community connectivity. So basically between Fortuna and Blue Lake in terms of where the, you know, where a lot of the big decisions are being made in the current context. And so I do, I think, I think the, the Madron, a Bushnell combo as it's, you know, being proposed with Supervisor Madron as the, as the member works for me.
Okay.
Just throw it out there, that half a billion dollar other trail kind of gets my attention, so, okay.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next one, which is the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission and REDEC. Currently we have Supervisors Wilson as the member and Madron as the alternate. If they're interested to make any changes, Supervisor Wilson?
I think this is, I love this committee. It's really fun. But I do think that as a new member and someone who wants to know a lot about what's happening all around the county, this is actually, I'm just saying, if Supervisor Bushnell would be interested in this, this is really, you, you really get your finger on the pulse on a lot of stuff. And so I would say that I would see if it would be something you'd be interested in. It's on a one, it's the last, it's the fourth Monday evening as member. Yeah, I think she would do a good job and, and have that business connectivity and understand it. I, it seems like a good one to me.
And, and you're right.
I love it, just have to say, it's like.
And I'll, I'll take up the alternate on that because, I mean, I don't have a lot of history of, of doing everything for so long, so I'd love to.
Okay, so you're interested in alternate, I hear you saying. Supervisor Madron, are you okay letting, not letting, but the team of Bushnell and Bone go for REDEC this year?
Go, go Bushnell and Bone. Let's do it, the B-team.
All right, good. We got that one. Okay, okay. Next, we've got, oh, this is Rex, the California and Golden State Finance Authority. We've already taken care of that through RCRC. The Supervisors' Joint Conference Committee was formed in August and it's myself and Supervisor Madron, now that we both know, because we actually had our first meeting and we didn't know who was there. The St. Joseph Hospital Advisory or Advocacy Committee and currently Supervisor Bone and Madron, is there an interest in changing that? Nope, it's okay. All right, we're moving on. The HTA, I know Supervisor Bone is extremely interested and very active in that. And Supervisor Wilson is member and Madron is alternate. Is there any desire to change that?
Not for me. It's good. I like it the way it is.
All right. North Coast California, Northwest California Resource Conservation and Development Council. And currently that Supervisor Madron and Wilson. Anything change? Okay, all right. Trinity River Basin Fish and Wildlife Subcommittee. Same members, Wilson and Madron, is that still a fan? All right. Humboldt Waste Management Authority, Supervisor Bone, who I know is very active in that as well, is a member and Supervisor Madron is the alternate. I am the second alternate, but would be happy to have someone else take that position. Not that I've been called recently, but it's still a very fascinating committee to watch. So Supervisor Bone, you still want to stay as the member?
Yeah, we're changing executive directors and trying to figure out this CRB thing, which.
Yeah.
I would like to be second alternate. If that's okay with everyone else.
Supervisor Madron, and you'd stay as alternate? Am I correct? So you got three? All right, good.
Yep.
North Coast Resource Partnership. Currently we have Supervisors Wilson and Madron with Bone being the alternate.
That was, that was a bone to bone last year because I still, I would still would like to serve on this. In seven years, I've never, I, and again, I don't have all the experience that like Steve and some people have, but that doesn't mean.
Thank you very much for your interest in that. And so would either Supervisor Madron or Wilson be willing to let Supervisor Bone go into the primary seat and perhaps they could drop back into alternate?
I'm still really enjoying this one and participating and I've been strong in that. But I have once or twice been unable to attend and I have let Supervisor Bone know about that. And I think he has attended. So I, I'm okay with the current, with the current setup. And I do hear Rex's request to be more involved there. And if it turns out this year that I'm unable to attend or something like that, I'll make sure that, let him know.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I'd like to continue to serve as member. This is, you know, right in the middle of my expertise and so I'd like to continue that. And I have appreciated when Supervisor Bone has been able to attend as well.
Okay.
I don't have any expertise in railroads, water and stuff like that, so I'll do that.
All right, so let's move on to the next one, which I think is almost our last or is our last, the Workforce Development Board. Currently myself and Supervisor, well, I'm the member and Supervisor Bone is the alternate. I am having harder times making those meetings. If there's somebody who would care to take over my spot and if not, that's fine, but. Is there anyone else interested in the group? Michelle, I mean Supervisor Bushnell?
Michelle's fine, but I would be interested in this.
All right, and Rex, would you want to move up to the member? Or do you want to stay the alternate? I mean Supervisor Bone?
I guess, I like Rex, I really do.
I know, but I like protocol.
I was born Rex. I can stay the alternate, I'm fine.
Okay. So now we're at other committees and we have the, well, still ever hopeful Airline Recruitment Subcommittee. Currently it's been Supervisor Wilson and myself. And I know that I'm still very much interested in that. Not that we've been able to have any meetings lately. Supervisor Wilson, any thoughts? You interested or ready to not be there?
You, you're doing a great job. I don't mind being your wingman on. I don't mind being your wingman on that, haha. But if anyone else is that interested, but it is, it is, it is an interest in my district. So I'm happy to keep serving, so yeah.
Yeah, all right. So I think we have through all of these except for the one that'll be back next week. And then the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee seemed to be the one I recall having extended conversation. So if I recall, the interested members were, I might need some help with this. Supervisor Bushnell is interested and Supervisor Madron and I believe Supervisor Bone, is this correct? So we need to whittle that down to just two. So if there is a possibility.
He's on, it's fine. Give it to one of those.
Um, well, Rex, I was going to say I, I'll, it's fine. I just, I can do it next, next time.
No, I think it's good you're on it. You've got a lot of stuff going on and I can, I can, I can, if I have a problem, I can let you know.
Okay.
No, you can't.
Yeah, we'll have to clarify that. So the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee then at this point in time will, will remain, I mean, will be Madron and Bone, correct? All right, thank you.
No, that's, that's not right.
What Supervisor, wait Supervisor Ryan, I need lunch, but yes, I am.
Chair, I believe it's Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Madron for the Cannabis Ad Hoc.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I mean. Thank goodness for you guys. So at this point, I believe we will go out to public comment and then come back and take a vote on this item. And let me see if there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment. At this moment, there are none showing. All right, in five, I'm closing it off. One, two, three, four, five. All right, nobody wants to comment. Probably because we think we'd put them on a committee. So is there a motion to approve this latest committee appointments, I mean, board appointments minus the one item that'll be back next week?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Without any further conversation, Ryan, will you do, I will call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this by.
All right, thank you. And we didn't get it to eleven, but I am going to ask us all to take a 10-minute break so staff can have a rest, so we can all grab a cup of coffee and people around the phones can actually take a few minutes. So we'll actually, actually, we're going to make it 11 minutes. Okay, and come back at 11:45? All right, okay. So we will see you back here at 11:45. Right? So I assume Supervisor Bone is heading to his room. We're missing two. No, Supervisor Madron, are you there? Just not on screen?
I'm here.
Okay, and Super, okay, well, then we will continue. So welcome back to the board meeting. At this time, we're going to move on to H2, which comes to us from County Council. And Jefferson, would you mind giving us a briefing?
Thank you, Chair. Your board previously met on December 8th and 15th to consider the request of the Auditor Controller for outside representation regarding an investigation. On the 15th, the board authorized a legal services agreement and directed for options to be provided to the Auditor Controller. However, after that meeting, Ms. Day Wilson filed an ex parte petition with the court on December 22nd under Government Code 31,000.6 to be appointed as outside counsel. The presiding judge held a hearing the next day. The Office of the County Council appeared and offered alternative counsel on behalf of the board. That was Ms. Amelia Burrows from the Jansen Malloy Firm. The presiding judge has issued an order, which is attached to the staff report. That order states that although Ms. Day Wilson is the attorney of choice for the Auditor Controller, your board is not obligated to select her firm. The course also states a belief that Ms. Day Wilson should be compensated at a reasonable rate for her legal work to date. At the hearing, she estimated that to be approximately 20 hours. At this point, the recommendation to the board remains the same and that is appointment of Ms. Amelia Burrows to the Jansen Malloy Firm as outside counsel for the Auditor Controller. Approval of this item would authorize the Chair and the Auditor Controller to enter an agreement with the firm for the outside representation. I did want to add that I received some further correspondence from Ms. Day Wilson. She did say that she does not believe the financial impact is accurate. She believes the, the fees up to this point are likely, she said, $10,000 plus. And that the going rate for attorneys is full, excuse me, $400 an hour. I will note that Ms. Burrows stated rate for this representation is 195. Ms. Day Wilson did say to the court that she would take on the representation for that amount, but I'm not sure if that was tied to the judge's order or if that would still be the case now. And I also believe that the Auditor Controller is here, so hopefully she can fill us in on her position.
Yes, and thank you. I was going to ask the auditor to be free to, wait, okay, there you are. I'm welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Bass. Hello, Second District Supervisor. Nice to see you. I have prepared a statement. May I ask for time to read my statement and then I am happy to answer questions afterward?
All right, and hopefully the statement is within like four minutes or something or less?
I believe so.
Okay.
Not a 45-minute presentation this time.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Supervisors and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and share with you my thoughts on this item. For the most part, I have remained silent with regard to this specific request for outside representation and have spoken only via my attorney. My request to the board is a simple one, to appoint outside counsel to represent me as the Auditor Controller during the investigation that has been commenced against my office, as is the board's duty pursuant to Government Code Section 31,000.6. This is a very simple request that has become convoluted at the hands of your own county council. This is now the third meeting on this subject, spanning over two months, when this could have and should have been handled in one meeting. There has been speculation about my request and understandably a lot of curiosity about why I might need an attorney. I promised the public three things when I ran for this office, that I would act with integrity, promote transparency and practice accountability. For this reason, I'm ready to communicate about why I am requesting outside representation and specifically to be represented by Cindy Day Wilson. In October of 2020, I was notified of Director Lee of HR's and Council Billingsley of County Council's intent to investigate complaints made about late payments and reconciliations. They wrote me a letter wherein they ordered me to participate and to keep the investigation confidential. I immediately expressed my willingness to participate. The tone of the letter intrigued me though, and I asked clarifying questions of Director Lee, who expressed I could reach out to her if I had any questions. Specifically, I asked, how much time is this going to require and when will it take place? Shall I table the GL mapping document so that I can fully participate in this investigation? What consequences will there be, if any, for the complaining agency when it is found that we are not at fault? And how much is this new investigation costing the county? Director Lee responded that she did not know the answers to any of my questions and recommended a continuation of the GL mapping document. I then reached out to Mr. Billingsley and asked clarifying questions about the investigation. Specifically, I asked, what is the specific authority behind the issuance of the letter and the suggested order for me to participate? What is the specific authority behind the order for me to keep the contents of the letter and the context of the investigation private? What is the specific authority that prevents me from discussing this with my department and with my county council liaison? What is the county's connection to the selected firm and specifically yours and Linda's, if any? How was this firm selected? What is the scope of the engagement with this investigative firm? Am I being treated as an elected or an employee? If employee, why would this report be made public, thus violating my privacy as personnel? If elected, will you be willing to publicize the complaint letters and the agreement with the investigative firm for the public's review as well as the full unredacted findings report? And will I receive a copy of the complaint letters? Mr. Billingsley responded that while he appreciated the concerns and apprehensions that are raised, he couldn't discuss any of the underlying details. Having received inadequate responses to my questions and realizing that an investigation into an elected office by anyone other than a superior court or a grand jury is not normal or commonplace, I reached out to Attorney Cindy Day Wilson. Ms. Day Wilson is qualified and experienced and was able to advise me right away. Upon her advice, I communicated with Mr. Billingsley again and asked additional clarifying questions. Specifically, I asked, is county council unable to provide counsel to me because it has a conflict of interest? If so, what is that conflict? Is county council unable to provide counsel to me because this investigation is adversarial between the board and the Auditor Controller Department? It appears that based upon the information I have received so far, there is no order or authority to compel me into participation or discretion. Is this correct? And based upon Government Code 31,000.6, upon my request, the board shall contract with and employ legal counsel to assist me. How would you prefer that I make this request of the board? Consent calendar or department presentation? Mr. Billingsley responded and said there is no conflict. He said that the county has a fiduciary duty to investigate the complaints regarding delayed payments, transfers and reconciliations. He urged me and my staff to participate and asked that I confirm that I will participate, not impede the participation of my staff and allow the process to proceed.
Excuse me, Order, Poszamangas, not trying to rush you, but it's been like six. So, and I understand there's a lot that you've got that you would like to share with us. But if you could kind of try to move along a little faster, then we can actually give the conversation for you. If that's okay.
I will read faster. He did not provide any specific authority to enter into this investigation or to order me to do anything. It was at this point that I requested Ms. Day Wilson's representation. I was not satisfied with information provided by either Director Lee or Mr. Billingsley and did not trust the process up to that point. Further, I had already compiled several items of documentation that showed I was receiving disparate treatment from any other department heads. For instance, in 2020 alone, the CAO was granted two new highly compensated positions through the mid-year budget without a study to confirm that need or recommendation. The Director of DHHS has been granted several new positions via consent calendar without a special meeting or even a discussion to confirm that need or recommendation. The Treasurer-Tax Collector was granted a reclassification of one of his positions to Supervising Treasurer without a staffing study or special meeting. But my request for a Supervising Accountant was denied and instead deferred to the HR Director, even though the county already committed to a $2 million study with Coffin Associates, who already drafted the Supervising Accountant classification and recommended that my office have that position. It was only after Ms. Day Wilson communicated with Mr. Billingsley that he became active in my inquiries and even prepared agenda items to your board himself for days he knew I was unavailable to attend. On November 23rd, 2020, I was summoned to a special meeting wherein members of the county's Budget Ad Hoc Committee endorsed the CAO's staff report accusing me and my office of creating operational gaps that would potentially lose funding for the county in the millions of dollars and several complainants stepped forward to express their concerns and ask for resolution. There was Dennis Mayo, a man who I've never met or spoken with and who has never engaged with my office. There was a gentleman from a Fortuna School District who I have also never met or spoken with, who complained about having to provide substantive documentation to my office, not because he shouldn't have to, but because he just couldn't find it, therefore we shouldn't ask for it. There was a representative from HCOG who failed to disclose the relationship with the former Chair of this board, who also served on the board of HCOG and made no effort to communicate with me that there was even an issue. That same Chair denied me the opportunity. Yes, if I cannot finish my statement, I will be publishing it and delivering it.
Well, and that's what I suspected, but I just wanted to make sure that we got the salient points and when you're comfortable, then we can move forward.
Yes, all of my statement is relevant and important and provides context.
All right.
Okay.
I would just say it would have been helpful to have it prior to this, so we could have read it, but please continue.
I understand that and having learned about this agenda item on Thursday, I did not have enough time to do my work and also draft a response.
Okay.
So I apologize that you did not have this beforehand. That same Chair denied me the opportunity to respond to the complainants while my hand was raised to speak. There were other department heads who failed to disclose their own responsibility for many of the late payments and reconciliations in question. Finally, there was the MGO representative who wrote a report at the CAO's direction about this county's fiscal processes as they relate to my office, who used that meeting as an opportunity to give a sales pitch for more contracted services. It should be noted that they were successful in securing a quarter of a million dollar contract for those pitched additional services in addition to their existing half a million dollar contract and smaller contracts for special projects. That November 23rd special meeting was not a meeting. It was a public shaming intended to discredit me and cast doubt on the function of my office. For six and a half hours, I sat there listening to complaints about nothing. I say nothing because I am still waiting to hear what it is my office has done wrong. We have followed the law and we have enforced the law. We had already communicated with the board, the CAO, all departments and the public about our challenges with staffing that resulted in difficulties keeping up with this ever-growing county. There is also the coronavirus pandemic and a shelter-in-place order that impacted our ability to provide services. Instead of providing support to our office, the board denied my request for staffing and chose to hold the special meeting instead. Government Code 31,000.6 allows for three officials to have the right for this outside representation. Those three officials are the Assessor, the Sheriff and the Auditor Controller. There is a reason why only those three officials have this right. The reason is that these officials are bound to follow all laws and regulations that can extend beyond the Board of Supervisors authority. Specifically in the case of the Auditor Controller, they serve as the public's watchdog over public funds and the accounting of the spending of those funds. In order for the Auditor Controller to be effective in that position, they must be free of influence and control by the Board of Supervisors and their appointed officers. This includes the board's attorney and appointed department heads. Two weeks ago, I learned that the Human Resources Director and County Council, with the approval of the CAO, had actually began the investigation into my elected office back in August of 2020. They engaged with a private firm via two separate contracts, each for $50,000, for a total of $100,000. Ms. Lee and Mr. Billingsley did this all without approval of the Board of Supervisors and without notice to the public of the expenditures. They did this by circumventing my office, which has the actual authority to oversee all accounting methods and internal controls per Government Code 26881. This is bad faith on their part and they acted without your authority and at another significant cost of taxpayer money. I am deeply troubled by Mr. Billingsley's representation to the court on December 23rd that he declared a conflict on December 8th. This is not true. You will recall that Mr. Billingsley presented the matter to the board on December 8th, recommended an ethical wall, then withdrew that recommendation stating that there was no conflict and then the matter was continued to December 15th. In short, he lied to the court. Another county employee, former or present, has uncovered the misuse of county funds. And with that information, the US government is currently suing this county and alleging fraud and concealment by the CAO and other appointed officers by way of manipulating consultant reports. The county was sued in federal court for up to $50 million in 2018. The lawsuit was filed on behalf of the United States and the Federal Aviation Administration. This lawsuit asserts both claims were submitted.
Miss Poszamangas?
Yes.
I appreciate you going through the time. I appreciate you going through the timeline that many of us will have the opportunity to talk about, but I suggest you please get to the gist of why you believe you need representation of that one individual person, because we really want to talk about this and move forward for you. One way, you know, that would be helpful, please, to just kind of try to get to the -- this has almost been 10 minutes now, so if you could try to get it a little closer to being done, that would be really appreciated, so we could actually have a conversation about it. Because we do want to have a conversation, so thank you.
What part of my statement would you like for me to not read?
Well, you said you could get it for 10 minutes. I -- 10 minutes is a long time. How long do you think you need to finish your statement?
I'd love to.
How long do you think you need to finish your statement, auditor? Do you think?
Less than 10 minutes in addition to now. I can finish reading this. Give me five more minutes. It's difficult for me to pick and choose what I say because I feel it is all relevant and will explain why I am requesting representation, not just to this board, but to the public that I am beholden to. It's important that they are also aware of my full statement.
Yes, because I understand you want to get your viewpoint across. So five minutes, and then we'd like to move on to have further discussion. Thank you.
The county was sued in federal court for up to $50 million in 2018. The lawsuit was filed on behalf of the United States and the Federal Administration -- Aviation Administration. This lawsuit asserts false claims were submitted to the F A A by Humboldt County for grants under the federal government's airport improvement program. The lawsuit asserts, and I quote, beginning at paragraph twenty-three of the lawsuit, that in March of 2017, in response to the recommendation from a majority of the members of the county airport advisory committee, the county board of supervisors hired Volair Aviation Consulting to conduct an airport governance and sustainability study. In May 2017, Volair interviewed county personnel, elected officials, and airport property tenants. Based on these interviews, Volair obtained information about the county's pervasive revenue diversion and rental structure, violations which are starving the airport of resources. Volair included this information in its draft aviation division financial review, which it delivered on or about June first, 2017, to the C A O and the D P W. Volair's original May report has never been released to the public, and upon information and belief, the C A O and D P W have concealed it from the county board of supervisors and the public. It should be noted that Mr. Billingsley failed to disclose this litigation to our external auditors as required, thus opening us up for more problems down the road. The lawsuit is ongoing, and a report is to be issued by March of this year. The Voltaire report referenced in the lawsuit was approved by the board for the amount of $324,000 on the board's consent calendar on January twenty eighth, 2020. There was no public discussion and no mention of the dollar amount except in the staff report and the contract itself. Yet, I am to authorize the payment for these contracts as the auditor controller. Yet, I am the one who was summoned to a special meeting, which included unfounded and conclusory allegations about my job performance. Clearly, this investigation is already tainted by the board's communication that my office is guilty of creating operational gaps by way of publishing such statement in its agenda item for the November twenty third special meeting. My office will not be participating in this investigation without effective attorney representation. My attorney of choice is and has been Cindy Day Wilson. She has already informed herself of this matter and has performed research and representation on my behalf with regard to this matter. Engaging with a new attorney at this point would result in taxpayer funds being wasted on duplicative work to bring another attorney up to speed. If the board chooses to attempt to award this engagement to someone other than Ms. Day Wilson, then it owes the public an explanation as to why, and I will seek her appointment through other means. I also want you to be aware that I have spoken with Ms. Amelia Burrows, the attorney recommended by your county council. She is very nice and was a delight to talk to. I am sure she is highly competent in her own right, and my selection of Cindy Day Wilson is in no way a commentary on Amelia Burrows. You need to know that when she was first contacted by Mr. Billingsley, he told her nothing of the dispute or who she would be representing. He simply inquired if she would be willing to represent a county employee in an investigation, but did not tell her my name, what the issue was about, or that I had already chosen an attorney. It was not until the ex parte application before the Humboldt Superior Court on December twenty third that Ms. Burrow learned the true nature of my request and the fact that I was already represented by Ms. Day Wilson. Again, a misrepresentation by your county council. Ms. Burrow stated during our conversation that I am entitled to effective representation and should demand my attorney of choice. I am doing that today. I want to leave you with this thought. It appears that you believe it is within your purview to investigate an elected official. So let's take that to its logical conclusion. So you are saying that if someone files a complaint against Supervisor Bone, for instance, for alleged racist statements that you will then investigate and take action? That clearly hasn't happened, as Mr. Bone has never investigated for the disparaging statements he made about Hispanic people, nor did this board take any action to reprimand him or condemn his statements. We are at the height of a pandemic with regard to new cases in this county, yet you have not investigated the sheriff for his alleged failure to enforce restrictions, nor have you held a special meeting about his actions during the COVID-19 pandemic. Have you had an investigation performed into the C A O's alleged actions of fraud and alleged cover-up as outlined in the federal lawsuit filed against the county? Have you had a special meeting about her role or her alleged failures to perform her job? It is my sincere hope that the board will review the origins of this investigation, hold accountable those directors that acted outside of the board's direction and the public's view, and find that this investigation is unwarranted, unnecessary, and contradictory to the board's strategic framework. Further, it is also my hope that the board will reexamine this county's engagements with consultants, including M G O and also all of the times the board has delegated authority.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If we have questions, we'll certainly ask you. So thank you for sharing those details with us, and everyone's allowed for their own opinion, and Supervisor -- not Supervisor -- Billingsley really demoted you. Yes, County Council Billingsley.
I just wanted to make -- respond to one issue that was raised. It was mentioned that I allegedly lied to the court. That is untrue. On December eighth, I declared a potential conflict for my office. That is directly reflected in the agenda item for December fifteenth. I put that in there clearly stating what had happened. So that is not true. There were no misrepresentations to the court. Now, that's the last thing I'd like to say about that.
Supervisor Bass, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I was talking to myself. You know, thank you, Jefferson, for pointing that out, and I think there's room for some conversation, you know, now that this has gone down a certain direction where a lot of grievances were aired, and there might be some more of those in this conversation, I suspect. So at this time, I'm going to go back to try to get on track of what our conversation is today. And the best I can state it is --
We --
Supervisor Bone?
Well, I just -- I'm having a hard time. I don't know how far off base we can get, but we talked about the lying of county council, the corruption or the misappropriation of his job by the sheriff, the corruption in the C A O's office, and my conversation with one person. And just for a point of clarification, I just got through with a three-month investigation at the cost of the county for $23,000 for a six-minute conversation that found no findings. So I have been investigated and paid for my own lawyer, mind you. Where the hell are we going on this? We're talking about an attorney and --
Okay, Supervisor Bone, sorry to interrupt you, County Council Billingsley.
Under the Brown Act, this is agendized as representation for the auditor. That's what should be discussed and what should be decided. Obviously, the auditor wanted to have statements tied into why she's requesting a certain attorney, but that is the decision that's before your board, is which counsel is appropriate for the auditor controller.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, so C A O Wilson -- oh, sorry about Nilson. I barely saw your hand up there.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I just also want to address some of the comments from the auditor controller about the fraud and corruption in the county administrative office, and all of those statements are untrue as well. Thank you.
All right. So now we can get down to the conversation at hand of this representation. Is there a supervisor who'd like to wade in on this? Supervisor Bone, and then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Amelia Burrows as outside counsel, pay Cindy Day Wilson at the same rate, $195 an hour for 20 hours, which I think comes to $7,900, I believe, and move forward as we look into the -- how's it said? The auditor controller's office, not necessarily the auditor controller.
We have a motion. Is there a second at this time? Or perhaps we need more conversation?
That's fine. I just thought I'd throw it out there.
All right. Council -- County Council Billingsley?
I would recommend that the issue of any past billings be resolved through the claim process, because I don't know if there's been work put in between then and now. It would be helpful if that could just be submitted, and then we could look at it through the regular claim process to deal with that issue rather than set on a specific amount and time right now.
And we will get a detailed billing format on that, right?
Well, I would hope that something would be submitted justifying whatever the proposed hours are, without details as to what the specific -- obviously protecting the privilege with Ms. Paz Dominguez.
While people were thinking, I also wanted to make a comment. I know Director Lee was brought -- her name was brought into that, and I have to say she's one of the most professional people in H R I've ever seen, and we're doing things that we probably should have done in the past, so, you know, it's -- I'm just standing up, and I believe she is working in the best interest of the county. You know, I just wanted to let it be out there because it sounds like there were some fairly disparaging remarks. But that doesn't help us get where we're going. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Well, everybody else's crickets. I mean, I fully support our staff all the way from the sheriff's, C A O's. I believe they're all acting upon their approved authority and doing the job they're supposed to do. So, I mean, they've got my full support on that, and --
Supervisor Bushnell?
I would like to ask Council Billings a couple of questions, if I may. First of all, the motion is to hire outside counsel, and the county has chosen someone, and that's within our preview, our purview, right?
Yeah, that's consistent with the court's order.
And the court's order states that we can choose the counsel?
Yes, it expressly states that.
Okay. And I don't know -- well, I'm just going to ask, why would we not -- and you can say no or shut me up or whatever, but I'm going to ask because I don't know. Why would we not choose her counsel that she requests?
I can't speak for the board. That was the board's position at the last meeting. I can't say what I said at the hearing from the correspondence with Ms. Day Wilson. I'm worried that she will not keep within the confines of the representation strictly to this investigation. That was my concern, but I can't speak for the board.
Thank you. And my last question would be, the attorney that the county has chosen has nothing to do with the county, correct? It's outside representation?
That's true, and that's also why I did not share any information with her, because she would be the attorney for Ms. Paz Dominguez. All I asked is if she was available and would be able to accept representation. I did not discuss anything with her. That wouldn't have been appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
I have a procedural question for you, Jefferson. Towards the end of the statement, I believe we heard something to the effect that if we did not provide the attorney of choice, there were going to be other methods to get there, and so does that kind of the threat of litigation? I mean, it's one of those things where I'm going, man, that sounds like it could go there. And in the past, you know, when there's been threats of litigation, there's usually like a pause in the conversation, so I just wanted to make sure that this is all good.
I'm not sure what that statement meant. Perhaps the auditor controller wants to clarify, or perhaps not.
Well, would you like to? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Clarifying question, when you say litigation, do you mean a court case? Because if so, then no, that's not what that meant. I mean, I'm interpreting a court case to be like one party versus another party.
I'm thinking more just a -- not a court case, but a legal opposition to whatever we've chosen. I don't know what you would call that, but perhaps it's not worth going, you know, having that conversation. I just wanted to make sure. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, just to clarify, it's not a threat of litigation.
Okay, because I certainly heard it as a threat of litigation. I'm just saying, my interpretation, when someone says, I'm going to move to try and change this in some way, and we're talking about legal proceedings, I don't know what other method within a legal proceeding is not litigation, I guess. And so I apologize if I'm misinterpreting when someone says they're going to seek means to change the decision. I'm not really clear what other avenue there is besides litigation. And by litigation, that means something ending up in front of a judge. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jefferson, I mean, that's generally what we consider litigation, or something asking to be, or, you know, that could end up in front of a judge.
I can't speak for the auditor controller, but normally if someone were to challenge a decision of your board, that would go to court, and that would be litigation. But I don't know what is intended.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I don't know what that means. I apologize. I mean, you know, I definitely have asked this board to go into closed session because of what is perceived to be threat and litigation, and that generally means challenging a decision that would move to a court, which this did, quite frankly. I mean, and so we just went through litigation. I don't know why we would not be concerned that a challenge to a decision today would not be considered threat of litigation, and maybe the auditor controller can give us something on that, because I'm a little -- I don't know what that means. If it's not threat of litigation, I don't know what it is.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm seeing now that we're all interpreting litigation maybe differently. I don't think of litigation as anything related to court, specifically because I consider government code thirty one thousand point six to be more procedural, where it's not necessarily me suing the county, but me taking a step in a government code to go to a judge and ask the judge to do something. There are -- when I reference other means, there are appeals that can be made to the judge's decision, not necessarily the board's decision. So if that were the case, it wouldn't be litigation against the county, though. And I'm also not understanding -- I mean, if we're trying to stay on topic and I need to be silenced during my statement, we're already off topic again, because the motion is not to deliberate on something I might hypothetically do, it's to deliberate on which attorney you will choose. Am I -- maybe I'm misunderstanding?
No, we -- I just -- I think part of the reason it got very off-topic is because there was a very, very long introduction to the concerns. And so now we are all trying to simulate going, well, we don't necessarily agree with that, or I am, and I don't necessarily agree with that, you know, like we're saying, interpreting differently. So we'll try to get this back, and of course it goes. Supervisor Wilson?
If it goes to a judge, it's litigation. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Council Billingsley.
Well, what I'm hearing here is depending on who your board chooses, there may be further action in this case, and it would be a challenge to a decision of your board because the court order has given authority to your board to select the attorney.
Okay, you're still -- Jefferson, I'm going to ask you really clearly about the word litigation, so we're all really clear that what I heard from the auditor controller is a threat of litigation, even though she's not interpreting it in her definition, but in our definition of litigation, which is to go to court, that's what would happen if we don't choose the attorney of her choice. That was what I hear. Is that your interpretation?
It's slightly difficult not knowing what legal process this would move forward with, but it does sound like it would be -- with, but it does sound like it would be a legal challenge to a decision of your board, which would be considered litigation.
Okay. I just want to be really, I guess, trying to get clarified, clarified because then we end up paying for that. I mean, that's the litigation part. That's the, that's the risk management that we're supposed to analyze. So, when the auditor controller says, "I'm going to take this for if you don't make a decision that I want," then we are, have to analyze that, and we're supposed to analyze that in closed session, what that threat of litigation is, what's the cost of that threat of litigation, what's the process, what is it, is it not just the cost, but you know, whether it's right or wrong and those sorts of things. That's where, when someone says something like that, it makes, it makes me want to go into closed session to really, you know, confidentially discuss the ramifications of that, what I perceive as a, as a threat of litigation. I, I don't know. I mean, that's just where I, that's where I'm at. And maybe, Jefferson, you can clarify. I'm done talking about this for now because I, I don't know where else to go.
Actually, before Jefferson said, and then to Supervisor Bone, I think Supervisor Wilson really explained my concerns as well. And in other boards I've been on, and I don't think it's happened for a long time, there's been times where the threat happens during the conversation, basically, and you can, I believe you can go down to a closed session, but that might be miss, total misunderstanding my part because it's been a long time since this has come up. But, but yeah, it does sound, it was sounding kind of, it was very, I agree with Supervisor Wilson. Anyway, Supervisor Bone and then Bushnell?
All right, I'll try it again. I'll make another motion that we accept staff's recommendation to authorize the chair of the board to sign an agreement for recommended outside legal representation of the auditor controller. That's it. Staff's recommendation. Didn't you guys beat this horse to death? I'll pull it back.
Yes, Auditor Paz Dominguez.
Amelia Burrows has not seen the agreement that you are being asked to sign today with her. She has not agreed to represent me, and she encouraged me to seek effective legal representation. I'm, I am not understanding why county council is pushing that she be hired. If she's not, she hasn't accepted.
My motion was just for outside counsel. I don't think I mentioned a name, did I?
It wasn't necessarily in direct response to Supervisor Bone. I meant in general.
All right. I know, I don't know, Jefferson, if you wanted to say something, but I know Supervisor Bushnell did have her hand up.
Well, my question was for Ms. Paz Dominguez, and I think she just answered it. I was gonna ask why she was opposed to the county's choice for counsel, which you kind of answered. And I'm going to ask Mr. Billingsley with Supervisor Bone's motion, without stating a person, is that, is that, is that what we're, is that considered part, would be considered the motion?
Through the chair, the motion was, was for staff recommendation, which is for Ms. Burrows. I, I think the issue here is, at least from my letters from Ms. Day Wilson, is the position that no one else is acceptable aside from Ms. Day Wilson. Is that the position of the auditor controller? I believe it is. I don't want to speak for her.
All right. Thank you, Council, County Council Billingsley. Auditor Dominguez, Paz Dominguez, excuse me, is that, is Jefferson's assessment correct, that you will not expect, you not, not let anyone else but Cindy Day Wilson be your representative?
Thank you, Chair Bass. I believe I am entitled to effective representation, and I have found that I can receive that test from Attorney Cindy Day Wilson. I hold firm that she is my attorney of choice. And again, it in no way devalues Amelia Burrows. Had I known about her before I had engaged with Cindy Day Wilson, I likely would have considered her just as much. But Amelia Burrows was a new name that I learned about in December. I think it would be duplicative work to hire her, and I, I'm firm that my attorney of choice is Cindy Day Wilson. I would appreciate that consideration from the board.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
I'm just losing track here. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll let, I think Supervisor Bushnell, did you have something more to say? Because, yeah, never mind. I'll, I'll hold, I'll hold if someone else has something to say.
I think what I was, you know, I understand the part about effective counsel, and I think there's a interpretation of what that word means. And, you know, the specific attorney has become very proficient at suing governmental agencies. And so, that version of effective counsel might be different. It sounds like Ms. Burrows had, you know, plenty of background for what we're talking about as an investigation, you know. It's a, to me, it's a, at two different levels. And so, that's why I'm having a bit harder time of the, you know, firm stand. But, you know, I'm, I'm willing to have more of the conversation on how it moves from there. Supervisor Wilson?
Sure. This is a question for Jefferson, Council Billingsley. If the board decides to move with staff recommendation, would that keep the auditor controller from continuing to engage with Cindy Day Wilson? It just means that the county wouldn't pay for that. I mean, she could still engage with Cindy Day Wilson, correct?
Well, at this point, we have an order of the court that allows the board to select counsel. I mean, what, what the auditor controller does with that decision is, is not entirely clear.
No, I guess what I'm saying-
The board would be selecting a particular counsel, and that would be fulfilling the requirements under the government code.
But she could also hire co-counsel if she so chooses, correct? I mean, she could, I mean, there's, there's no, there's no law that says you can only hire one. I can hire two engineers. I can seek two doctors. Is that not possible? It doesn't mean that, that, it just means that the county wouldn't pay for that counsel. Is that correct?
The county would only be paying for the counsel that your board selects. I, I can't speculate as to what kind of relationship might work moving forward with other counsel.
I'm just saying it's not illegal for the, the auditor controller to hire alternate councils should, should she so choose.
She has alternate counsel at this point.
Right. Okay.
Your hand is collapsed, Supervisor Wilson. You still?
Yeah, I mean, with that, I'll, with that, I'll, I'll second the motion.
And can the motion be, I really believe, yes, thank you, Ryan. Can you read the motion?
I would, I would suggest that Supervisor Bone make the motion again since it was withdrawn a second time for clarity.
I make a motion that we support staff's recommendation to authorize the chair of the board to sign an agreement for recommended outside legal counsel, representation of the auditor controller.
And just for clarity, that recommendation is Ms. Burrows.
And you guys can do that.
And for clarification, I, I did hear that they are, that this is, that the person, that the person being recommended by staff is qualified. But I haven't heard anyone say that this person is not.
Yes, Jefferson, sorry.
Through the chair, all my communications have said that she's willing to accept the representation. She does not have a conflict, and she gave me her hourly rate of 195. I do believe she's eminently qualified.
Supervisor, look, I'm sorry. Yes, Ryan?
Do we have a second?
And we have a second by Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you.
I know Supervisor Bushnell has a question, then I have a question.
My question is for Council Billingsley. I just want to hear you say that this fulfills our requirement as a county.
This is, through the chair, this is directly responsive to the court's order.
Thank you.
And then, Jefferson, my question would be, with this motion, does that also take care of any of the outstanding money owed Ms. Cindy, Ms. Day Wilson? Because I know we had that, a little bit of that conversation, that, that that was somehow included, I thought included in this.
I, Chair, I don't know that that needs to be included. If a bill is submitted, we have a regular process for looking at bills and figuring out-
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you. Well, I think we have a motion and a second. I think it's time that we do go to public comments. And the first hand up is actually 3053, so welcome, Thomas. And then Kent, you'll be after that.
Good afternoon, Thomas Mulder. So, following the Brown Act, I'm a little confused on where this agenda item went. I do know, under the Constitution, we have the right to freedom of speech, but the one thing that I do remember from being part of a, a board, and people are free to speak whatever they want, but they're held liable for whatever, they can be held liable for what they said. So, if I was, any of those names dropped and I was innocent, I'd be filing liable charges all day long. That 15, 20-minute presentation didn't really cover why the need for outside counsel or a different specific attorney was needed, other than they're really expensive. I mean, what I understand from this process is, hey, I'm being investigated. I'm gonna go hire my own counsel rather than go through the process to get outside counsel. That costs way more money than appropriate representation on taxpayer dollars. For someone who's fighting for taxpayer dollars, I just, I'm mind-blown by this whole process. So, I encourage any of those county people that were named, file libel suits. I highly encourage it because this whole thing has turned into a big mess. And realistically, I, I keep hearing deflection and deflection and deflection from the auditor controller's office. And if you Google what deflection is, because I'm not gonna be, say that word, but it's like, rather than take ownership for what's wrong and faults within things that we, we are doing as individuals, we're deflecting and saying it's someone else. So, it's really, really unfortunate. I hope you guys can get this dealt with. I mean, it's an investigation. If there's nothing to hide, who really cares? So, I, I'm really confused. I highly encourage those staff members to, if they have legal means, to move forward with that. And I support the county only paying what the hourly rate was for what the court order was for this attorney, rather than, I would assume this other attorney is 500 plus an hour because that's usually what those attorneys cost. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. And welcome, Kent, you're on next, on now. Sorry.
Well, Thomas, I'm gonna have to agree to disagree with you. Everything that the auditor controller said was what I refer to as public perception. And I perceive what she said to be true, and so do a lot of the people in the community. It was necessary for her to get this information out to justify the attorney she has of choice. We should all have an attorney of choice. And I, I have to backtrack here. Virginia Bass, shame, shame, shame. This was unbelievable that you went ahead and gave her four minutes to do a presentation, and you made all of us sit through another meeting, which was seven hours the other time. And I just cannot believe that you would have done that. We're trying to start out a new year where everybody has a chance to speak, especially the person who's making it, helping make a decision here. I, I, two or three times, she was cut off, and I really object to that. The choice of an attorney is up to her. It should be up to her. Hopefully, you will vote against this motion and allow her to move forward with her attorney of choice. I believe it's gonna save, and just, just so you know, Thomas, during the court hearings, as far as I understand, Cindy Day Wilson, from here forward, was willing to represent Karen Paz for $195 an hour to match the other fee there. So, there is no loss to the county. Major saving that she, this new attorney. And have you called Amelia now during this meeting, I would go ahead and, and table this till later in the day, call her and see if she actually said that she was advising Karen Paz to go with Cindy Day Wilson. If that's true, then she's already got her legal advice she needs, and, and there you go. And that's, that would be what she would be doing. So, I think it's called a writ, is the process for this to happen. So, thank you for my opportunity to speak. And this is unbelievable.
All right. Thank you, Kent. Our next caller is the last caller, 0197. And push star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Emily Mossman Smiley. I am a community member, and I am appalled at how many times Ms. Paz Dominguez was interrupted. There have been past presentations by staff and by people that you've had presentations with that went on and on and on with very redundant information, and you didn't, you never asked them to hurry up and get to the point. And I think everything she said was relevant, and I appreciate her statement. I think that, I think it was clear that if, if you hire a, a different attorney, that they will be doing duplicate work and wasting my tax dollar. So, you all will be wasting my tax dollar. I hope, Virginia, that you will vote against this, and also anybody, Madron, and I don't, can't remember the new person's name. I, I just, it is very rude how you've treated Ms. Paz Dominguez, and I think you, she deserves an apology. Absolutely. Thank you for my time.
All right. Thank you for calling. And I see no one else on, so we'll go back to the board. And what I will say in regards to the comments about my timing, I did ask upfront if it could be done in four minutes. I was not able to get a timeframe. If I had been told it'd be 20 minutes, then I could have been more prepared. So, I am sorry if someone felt that I was cutting someone off. I was trying to be efficient in the meeting, given the information that I had. So, apologize if that didn't come out right or how it sounded. But if I'd been asked to have 20 minutes and told ahead of a meeting, that would have been a different story. So, now that we're at there, we do have a motion and we have a second, I believe. Ryan?
Wait, 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 hold on.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Madron. I just saw, okay. Yes, thank you, Supervisor Madron.
Sorry, I didn't put my hand up in the participant list to make it easy for you. You know, my interest here is in getting work done and moving forward away from this conflict. You know, it just seems like every week we spiral further into conflict and accusations and operating from a place of fear. Oh, I'm worried about what this person might do, and so therefore I'm gonna have to do it this way. You know, I, I, I try very hard to not operate from a place of fear. Instead, I try to operate from a place of what do I want? What do I vision I would like to see happen? And what I'd like to see happen is get these conflicts resolved, get everybody back to work so that we can get the books caught up and get everything dealt with, and everybody in each of their departments can do their, their jobs. I think that's what the taxpayers hired us to do, and then we hire others. So, that's what I want to do. So, how do we get there? I'll try to be brief. I, I'm not gonna support this measure because I do believe that the auditor controller should be able to pick their own attorney. But I also recognize how this process works and how the court gave, you know, the laws gave special recognition to the sheriff, the DA, and, and to the AC to be able to have an attorney hired for them, paid for by the county. I understand that. And if Auditor Paz Dominguez was comfortable with, maybe after another conversation with Amelia Burrows, great, then everything's solved. But, you know, she's done some of that, obviously, from her comments, and also has a relationship with her current attorney. And I, I'm not so much afraid of the future because if other people are gonna sue back and forth, then maybe it's because some stuff happened and needs to be dealt with. But, you know, I'm not gonna go to that place. You know, what I want to do is resolve this current conflict and get the, the interviews and investigation done in regards- the interviews and investigation done in regards to the AC's office. And from my understanding of everything I've dealt in, dealt into, or delved into, I would say that what we're going to find out with that investigation is that staff are working really hard to do everything they can to do their jobs. We're not going to find that people are just sitting around twiddling their thumbs or people are, you know, working actively to try and not get bills paid and all that kind of stuff. You know, what we have is a significant change that occurred in the AC's office in regards to the AC wanting to have better and more complete documentation of expenses. I applaud that effort, but it's been a rough change for everybody. So we continue to get into all this conflict. So you know, if the auditor wants to hire their own attorney, they have every right to do that, I believe, regardless of the court order. I mean, the court has said to us, we need to move forward and pick, and I understand that. So then we're going to go ahead and do that today, it looks like to me. But I don't see any reason why the Auditor Controller couldn't also hire their own attorney and as co-attorney, or however all that works. But I do believe they have the right to do that, but not to be paid by the taxpayers. You know, Supervisor Bone and the CAO both had investigations. They hired their own attorneys. They weren't protected by that particular clause, and so they really had to pretty much hire their own attorneys. And I understand that, whereas in this case, there does seem to be some options here. So I just, I just don't like the way this thing is rolling out. I think the way it's happening just leads to more and more conflict. And frankly, I wish we could just forget about all these lawyers and just cooperate with the investigation because what it's going to find out is that we need to add the staff. And I wish that's where the AC would put her attention on completing the responses to our HR department in regards to the details of those positions so that we can do the supplemental budget and get these positions hired in that department, in the CAO's department, along with MGO, and we can actually get all of our work done and move forward. So that's kind of where I'm at on this. You know, I don't, I don't want to continue doubling down on conflict. I would very much like it if we could all just lower our guard here and move forward, get the investigation done, and move forward with taking care of our business. You know, this is just very frustrating because I see people doubling down on accusations and statements. And I don't see any of this resolving anything, frankly. So that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to say one thing, and then I'm going to go to Supervisors Bushnell and Wilson. And I also, I just wanted to point out that it's not even that staff could be an issue. Things could have broken down with the other agencies actually turning in their paperwork. I mean, I think that's what this is to do, is just find out, well, what can we do differently and better? But I do appreciate what Supervisor Madron brought up and can agree on most of that. Supervisor Bushnell and then Wilson.
Hi, thank you. My question, and I don't know who can answer it, but is the choice of Ms. Paz Dominguez's attorney, do we know, is it the same price as what, the $195? Does anybody know?
Jefferson?
Through the chair, that representation was made in front of the court, but I don't know if that was tied to the court actually appointing counsel. So at this point, the court has deferred that process back to the board. So I don't know if that rate would apply or not.
Thank you. Your guys, Jefferson?
And notwithstanding the non-agenda items, non-agendized items discussed by Supervisor Madron for a moment there, for clarification, Supervisor Madron, I guess what you, I mean, I, first of all, I agree with you that, that we really do need to like ratchet down conflict. And I think that's part of what is, has got everybody their backs to the wall in terms of, in terms of this discussion and the perception of conflict and litigation, quite frankly, and, and the histories behind that and our experiences within that. But to clarify, I think what you're saying is you believe that the Auditor Controller should pay for legal, her own legal services like everybody else in the county. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, I think. Through the chair.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, just trying to follow the process. So yes, that is what I'm saying, that if the Auditor Controller doesn't like or agree with the counsel that's being recommended by the county, she can hire her own attorney. Now, Council Billingsley may disagree with that because the court order didn't really deal with that aspect of it. But it seems to me she has a right to hire her own attorney. But more importantly, I wish we could just not hire any attorneys and just finish the investigation, which I think Supervisor or Chairperson Bass was right on. I think what it's going to show is that there's understaffing in the AC's office, and there's a lack of training for the new documentation that's going to be required. And the departments have a lot, they own a lot of this conflict in that they have not been providing things timely and complete at the request of the Auditor Controller, which is a big part of what has caused all these delays. So you know, I look forward to the investigation because I think it's going to show what we all know, which is we all need to get on board with what the Auditor Controller is requesting, where it is reasonable and required, and do that and get that training done and get our books caught up. So again, maybe that's off topic, but that's what I wish were happening. And if we don't want to do that, then people can hire their own attorneys and go sue and do whatever they want. But I'm not going to be a part of that. I, it's not where I want to go. I want to resolve the conflict, investigate what's going on. And I think there is plenty of responsibility in all of the departments, all of the districts, as well as AC's office. We all need to do more training, get things up to speed. And that's what hiring MCO and then getting more staffing in the AC's office and more staffing in the CAO's office in the short term. I believe that's what we ought to all be focused on so we can resolve this conflict and start getting back to our work.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. Auditor Paz Dominguez, please.
Thank you Chair Bass, and thank you Supervisor Madron. I agree with you and have those same intentions, though of course I show it differently. And just to clarify, I'm not sure if you, your board has read the agreements related to this investigation. But the, the issue I am having is not that I'm scared of what you'll find. I've actually invited all of you to come to my department to see what we do. I want to publish everything we do. I want full transparency. There are no secrets in my office. But what I take issue with is that these contracts have specific wording in them that say that the firm agrees to write reports at the direction of the county and will investigate complaints as relayed by the county. It's already biased. And that's my main concern, is that the investigation itself is already biased. And this board, or not Supervisor Bushnell, but already kind of concluded that we are guilty of creating operational gaps. I mean, that's what the agenda item said on November 23rd, which is why I said this investigation is tainted. That's really my primary concern because I do agree with Supervisor Madron that a fair investigation would show we're all working and we're trying our best with the resources available to us. But I do worry, given that, what is alleged in that lawsuit and given what I saw in those contracts, that this investigation might yield different reports written by somebody who is conflicted with my office. And then I also wonder if you would consider what happens if Amelia Burrows withdraws her offer? No one's talked to her yet. I talked to her. She encouraged me to request my attorney. What happens if you all vote to sign this agreement with her, and then Amelia Burrows says, no, thanks, I don't want any of this? Just something to consider.
Thank you. I guess my, I'd like to add to the thoughts there on this. Yeah, it's, doing the investigation, do you know the word investigation is what's used? Because it's more like fact finding where things broke down in many cases. You know, Supervisor Bone, and you've said, we've talked about others that have had investigations. And I think some of those, I mean, have been generated by some of the folks who are on this meeting. And they wanted that investigation, you know, investigation is fact finding in my role. And so I understand that it is a, it's not, it's kind of a scary sounding word, maybe in that respect. But I'm concerned with, I mean, the Auditor Controller's correct that, well, what if Amelia Burrows turns it down? But I'm also concerned and I'll, you know, be upfront that we don't know how that conversation went between the auditor and Ms. Burrows. It could have been, you know, it'd be interesting to have had, you know, know that conversation was happening. Because I don't want, I'm afraid that perhaps the relationship with that attorney had become tainted by what was shared. So it's like, I don't know where to, where to go with this. I understand, you know, I appreciate the auditor did mention, you know, well, what, yeah, she doesn't do it. So that is something we do need to be aware of. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you Chair Bass. I'm wondering if, two things. I'm wondering if we can push this forward and confirm with attorney that we're suggesting will take it. And second thing, if we could confirm with Ms. Paz Dominguez's attorney that she would do this case at the same rate? Because the issue is, you know, taxpayer money. And so I have those two questions that I'm wondering about.
All right, nice. Yes, Auditor Paz Dominguez.
Thank you Chair. Supervisor Bushnell, I did get confirmation from Cindy Day Wilson that what she said to the judge is true, and she is willing to accept the rate of $195 an hour.
Thank you, but I, thank you for that. I'm wondering if we should probably confirm that ourselves, so thank you though.
Any other hands, Supervisor Wilson?
I thought there had been another ex parte communication that Jefferson had mentioned with regards to the billings that had been determined by the judge already, that there was already conflict with relationship to that. Is that what I heard you say? Council Billingsley?
Through the chair, it wasn't specific. She did say that she thinks the average rate is $400, and she thought the fiscal impact of $4 to $8 was too low. She thought her, her billings to date would be, she said, 10,000 plus. But she did not mention an hourly rate specific.
So you can see, it does not appear to be resolved in, from her, from communications between that time of the judgment and the communication that we seem to be receiving through Council Billingsley. So I'm unsure how to, how to move forward with that, so.
Supervisor Bone and then Bass?
This is through the chair, to Council Billingsley. You talked to Amanda Burrows and said there was a case, and did she want to take it? And you got an affirmative, is that right?
Yes, I communicated with her via email. I asked if she was available. She said she was, she did not have conflicts, and then I asked her her rate.
And I did not?
Other than that, I just said it was coming back to the board today for a decision. I haven't discussed it.
I don't know anything about client privilege between attorneys, but since then, Karen Paz has talked to her, and it sounds like she's not going to want to take the case, for whatever reason, is what I'm hearing. And it is what I'm hearing because it's been mentioned. If you talk to her, if you talk to her, are you sure she wants to take it? And I don't know if there's been some groundwork laid where she's not going to take it because we're only hearing one side. And knowing full well that statements and accusations can be made that aren't necessarily true, I just, I'm trying to make sure that, and I don't know if it necessarily has to be Amelia Burrows because I know Cindy Day Wilson is an attorney for the city. She was an environmental attorney, so I, I'm sure there's another attorney at Janson Malloy or any of the other firms that we can use. But I'm just saying, I, you know, you haven't had any contact with Amanda Burrows since the initial contact.
Through the chair, no, I have not. And she was selected because of her area of expertise in employment law.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to have a question, but I'm not going to. Supervisor Bushnell, you have a question, or is your hand just still up? Okay. All right, so, yeah, Supervisor Madron?
Well, I'm wondering if the motion maker in the second round would be willing to consider an amendment that we take staff's direction, but with the hiring of Cindy Day Lewis at the price of $195. That's the attorney of choice. That's the attorney, I'm sorry. Anyway, that's the attorney of choice and at the rate that the other attorney would be at. The only reason I can see for not doing that is fear. Fear that somehow Ms. Day Wilson is going to somehow come after us for other reasons and sue us for other things and expand her effort beyond just representing the Auditor Controller. And again, I don't want to operate from that place of fear. And if there's things we've done that aren't appropriate, well, then people are going to come after us regardless of what we do. So let's, you know, would you guys be willing to accept that amendment? I could support that.
The motion maker is not, just in a clarification, I'm not scared of anything. I just want to get this moving forward and get the answers we're trying to get for, as you said earlier, the people we serve. And maybe we'll get our books closed sometime, and we can move forward and add, like you said, maybe it is more staffing because we've already added staff, but we could add more staff, and we can get our books closed so our school districts and things can, and actually get paid. People she doesn't know, Superintendent Fortuna, he can get his books closed. And so we can move, like as you eloquently said, Supervisor Madron, so we can move forward and get through with this conflict. And nothing creates conflict more than not paying a bill.
Supervisor Wilson, and then myself.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It seems to me that, just saying that if the, if the auditor had just hired an attorney and sat for the interview, it would be less than $10,000 already. And, you know, and the, and the public wouldn't be paying for it. And now we're at a place where, I'm just saying, the current attorney is asking for 10,000 has, I have to say, and I, with regards to what Jefferson or Council Billingsley is referring to, is there's a lot of tangential issues and have, that has been thrown, you know, that has been delivered to this board associated with this already. And so how do we confine those, you know, in terms of the billing for this, for this, which is supposed to be very specific to this, to this thing? It's, you know, it's, I guess I do see some concern about scope creep, as we call it, you know, where it, where it's already happening, right? And so it seems like a fresh start with a new attorney at a, at a rate that is not, already not, we don't have to argue about it, we don't have to debate about it. They're not, they're not asking, they're not, they're not saying that, oh, I'm gonna, you know, that, that I'm going to reduce my rate by half, that's the rate. I think, I think we would do better by the taxpayers to, to really stick with a single attorney that is starting fresh from this perspective, pay the other, the other attorney for their time as stipulated by the court. And so I guess I want to stick with the staff recommendations. If there has been tainting or a problem with a new, the new attorney that's been identified, could we amend the motion so that Council Billingsley could have some authority to find another attorney? Or is that possible, if there's some, something's occurred that we don't know about in the meantime? And is that possible, Jefferson?
Jefferson, and then Supervisor Bone?
Well, that was essentially the board's motion on the 15th, and then the court process started. But Ms. Burrows was the first choice. I could see if there are other choices if that is not available. That would be helpful to have that delegation.
Supervisor Bone?
Ryan, did I, I don't think I mentioned, I thought I said staff's recommendation, which doesn't have Burrows on there. I did not mention a Billy Burrows name. So I think that, I think the latitude is already there. Jefferson has already let us know who he'd like to be or who he's talked to. But since then, she's also been talked to by her potential client. So I don't know, I don't know. So I'm just saying. So I'm just saying.
My, my understanding, yeah, we're approving staff recommendations, um, which is, which is, uh, on, the recommendation under H2, to approve that staff recommendation.
And any other comments by the supervisors? Supervisor Wilson?
I mean, ultimately, going back to Supervisor Madron's sentiment and recommendation, which is lay down our guns and move forward, you know, I just think that that is, I think that's the best way to go. We are, we are conflicted, we are conflicted, um, with regards, at least I am, you know, with regards to this law that's requiring, well, that's asking us to determine, uh, whether we want to pay for counsel or not. And then, you know, look at what we're, what we can do to protect the county in that regard, as well as the rights, uh, of, of the auditor controller. I think that that's the balance that has been sought by the, by the judge. Heinrichs, who I think is, um, well-regarded, um, and I think that she, uh, deliberated on these issues already, has litigated that, um, to the extent, uh, that she, she could with all of the information that we have here today. Uh, and so with that, I, I think this, I think the motion is, is fine. I mean, do I want everyone to, everyone to have their lawyer of choice to be paid for? Sure, that would be awesome. Um, but when the public's paying for it, sometimes we don't get that, uh, that choice, um, necessarily. And so I think that's where we're at. Thank you.
All right. I am seeing no other, oh, Supervisor Madron, sorry.
Yeah, just, just to clarify an earlier question that came up where, um, I think it was Supervisor Wilson was trying to provide uh, some leeway for Counsel Billingsley in case there was a problem with Amelia Burrows. The, the motion that's on the floor is, uh, staff recommendation. Uh, and staff recommendation is to sign an agreement for the recommended outside legal representation of the A.C. And further down the staff report, it says, and Counsel Billingsley also stated this verbally, that, uh, the recommendation is for Amelia Burrows. So the way the motion is crafted right now, it is to, uh, hire Amelia Burrows. If there's a problem with that, then we're going to have to revisit this. There's no leeway there for Counsel Billingsley. The way the motion is crafted and the staff report is laid out. So I just wanted to point that out. If you look at those details, you'll see that I think I'm accurate there.
Is there recommended language from, uh, Counsel Billingsley that would amend the motion to give the leeway that, that is requested by the motion maker?
Through the chair, I think one thing that would be helpful, um, is to know the board's position. If Ms. Burrows is not available, I think the obvious next request will be, do you want Cindy Day Wilson, Ms. Day Wilson? So is, is the recommendation that it's Ms. Burrows or other alternative counsel aside from Ms. Day Wilson?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's not, I guess what I would say is that it's, I would, I, I could leave that up to staff to make that decision. I mean, I, I think that that's, um, why, why would we phrase it in that, in that term as just one or the other? Why not, um, allow you to just hire who you feel is competent? Or does that need to go back to the, does that need, would that need to go back to the judge?
Through the chair, the, the judge has given the decision to the board, but the board has conveyed to me prior that you did not want the appointment of Ms. Day Wilson, so it.
Supervisor Bone?
Well, I'm, and I'm reading in here, the Office of County Counsel appeared and offered alternative counsel, Ms. Amelia Burrows from the Jansen Malloy firm. The presiding judge issued an order on the petition, which was received just prior to publication. According to terms of the order, directions given to your board to contract with counsel for outside representation of the, uh, the auditor controller in the investigation discussed in the prior meetings. We have talked about Amelia Burrows, but the judge say we hire Amelia Burrows. The judge says we follow outside counsel and I followed, he said they're going to talk to, but if that doesn't work, then we just hire the next person outside counsel. I don't think the judge, it does say it's recommended, but the judge doesn't say. So I think the presiding order is what the judge says, not what we're saying, because they're the one who came up with the rip, right? I mean, I don't know. I just.
Jefferson?
Through the chair, that's accurate. I, I just need the direction. If Ms. Burrows is somehow not willing to take the appointment now, am I considering other local alternative counsel aside from Ms. Day Wilson?
As you can. That's what my detail say.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I defer back to your observation, um, Counsel Billingsley, which is the, the broadening of scope that has started, that has occurred, uh, and, and that concern. And I, I, I do share that concern. I think that's a reasonable, you know, if we're, we, we can't be hiring attorneys to, um, to, uh, you know, broaden scope beyond the, you know, representing a single human person, you know, this person in this limited scope. And, um, and I have, and, and I, and I share concern that that's, that, that that might happen, so. So I, I would say I concur with Supervisor Bone in, in terms of the flexibility.
It's there.
All right.
I'll stand by my motion.
Motion's still there. The seconder's still on board. Is there any other conversation to have at this time? All right, Ryan, will you please do the roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Bass, and just my understanding of the motion is we're approving staff recommendations and, and that is the motion.
What, and that assumes that it's not specific to the attorney named in the, in the, um, in the staff report.
It's just outside counsel.
Ryan, did you get, did you get that?
Yeah, I, I got that as well. Thank you. I, I'll take the roll call vote now. Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm gonna abstain.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, but I don't know, can, is, can you abstain? Is that a thing?
I don't know because I, my questions weren't answered, so I don't feel like I have enough information to vote. So would it be a no? That's not what I want to vote either.
I don't know how.
Well, perhaps we just continue on and perhaps the abstention won't matter. So let's pretend you haven't voted yet. How's that? So, um, yeah, but we do have, we have some policies about abstention, so hopefully we'll dig that up so we can all be clear on that in future meetings. All right, continue, Ryan.
Sure, thank you. We have a, we have an I from Supervisor Bone, an I from Supervisor Wilson, and current abstention from Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Madron?
Uh, I'm gonna vote no because as the motion is made, it still restricts counsel to only hiring that one individual. And I wish we were giving the council some leeway, otherwise we're going to be revisiting this in a week.
Clarification, um, sorry to interrupt in this. Jefferson, I thought we were determining that this led it to the gen, you know, for outside counsel, that we were able to strike the individual person's name. I just want my own clarification.
Yeah, that's what I'm voting for.
Yeah.
If that is the motion, Supervisor Bass, then yes, I'm an I. I wanted, that, it was very confusing.
Okay, so let's go back one more time on the motion, Ryan, as you understand it, and next please listen so we make sure that we get it all. And I'm sorry, we'll go back to the voting.
Sure, so with, with the, with the amendment that was made right before, um, the vote was cast, my, my understanding of the motion is to approve staff recommendations. And if Ms. Burrows is not available, to direct staff to hire other outside or other alternative counsel.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't have a question. I guess I'll answer it. So, whether is Ms. Burrows being available or not, um, I'm just wondering, I'm almost just saying, leave it as, get outside counsel from that firm, you know, because Ms. Burrows may say she's not interested. Anyway, Supervisor Wilson, maybe I'm just putting too much stock in this. I'm, I just, uh, want it to be more open-ended so we can actually make sure we get somebody on board. Supervisor Wilson? Then Bone?
The, the amended, um, you, you could amend the motion to read, authorize the chair of the board to sign an agreement for an outside legal representation for auditor controller as recommended by counsel.
Does that work for Supervisor Bone?
I, how about if I do this? I take, um, I take staff's recommendation and direct the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to contract with and employ legal counsel to assist auditor controller Paz Dominguez in the performance of her duties as it relates to the investigation identified in the October 14th, 2020 correspondence to auditor controller Paz Dominguez from the Office of Human Resources and County Council. That is straight out of the judge's order. Because the judge's order doesn't mention another attorney besides Cindy Day Wilson. So that's, that, that is out of the judge's order.
Excuse me, I, um, Auditor Paz Dominguez?
Page three, you guys, second, first paragraph.
Okay, I just, um, the auditor just had her hand up, so.
Thank you very much, Chair Bass. I've heard you say that you would prefer to not get to litigation, that that's really your main concern. You don't want to have more lawsuits on top of lawsuits, and I share in that. But I'm also concerned that your counsel is not cautioning you that you are treating someone differently, purposefully excluding her from consideration, not giving a vendor equal opportunity to submit a proposal. And, and it's still not clear on why your board would not give Cindy Day Wilson the opportunity to do this job other than disparaging her integrity and questioning whether or not she will do her job and respect the engagement that she signs with the county. If the engagement says that her focus is limited to only the investigation, why would this board then preemptively accuse her of working outside of that? I'm, I'm not understanding what's happening, but I, I feel like this should be said because if I was an attorney and I was watching this meeting, seeing, hearing my name be used this way, I would feel like I was being treated differently. And I would take issue with that.
I'll call for the question.
Something to consider.
All right, thank you. And considering a lot of things that are heard during these meetings, I'm sure there's a lot of that on a lot of different issues and a lot of people will feel kind of discounted. Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
I'm absolutely sure every attorney that has interest in this is listening to this meeting right now. And, uh, you know, that's, that's, and expecting compensation for that, which is kind of why I want to get rolling. Jefferson, um, do you, uh, feel that this has gone into the direction that, uh, can't, that, uh, the auditor controller, and again, poof, is that a threat of litigation?
Yes, Chief Jefferson?
The, the statement just now?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm not sure what the litigation from that would, would be. I think it would be helpful for the, for the motion to be clear that there's a delegation for, if Ms. Burrows is not available, for me to, to look to other local counsel.
Okay.
Which actually could involve, could include Ms. Day Wilson. If she were to be considered against the others, I'm just saying, that is outside counsel. Not saying that would be who would be our first choice or our choice. Yes, Jefferson?
I, I, at the prior meetings, the, the board expressed that they would like someone else. So it's difficult for me if it's delegated to me and the board has expressed these things. So I, I sort of need to know where, where the board is.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with your original sentence there, you know, I'd prefer it be outside counsel different than what, um, and been requested. Anyway, I'm fine to vote when everybody else is, if you think we have this somewhat nailed down. As far as the language, Ryan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and repeat the, the language. There, there was some discussions on the amendments, but my, my understanding is still, right before we begin to take the vote, which is to approve staff recommendations. And if Ms. Burrows is not available to direct, direct staff, which is county council, to hire other alternative outside local counsel.
Right, um, should we try the vote again?
Yes, Chair.
The seconder is okay with that language.
Yeah. Supervisor Bone, is that the correct language?
It, it, it's close enough. I just want to take the language out of the judge's order, so next week when we're before it, we can question the judge and not us.
And if you amend your motion to that, that's fine as well.
I, it, we'll take it the way it is. I mean, it, it says, I mean, if you read page three, it says all this, so. All right, I'm good with that.
Are, are we good with the one I read or am I?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Okay, so Supervisor Wilson, again, it's to approve staffer and recommendations. And if Ms. Burrows is not available, to direct staff to hire other alternative, other local, other local alternative councils.
Yes, it's fine.
Thank, thank you. Supervisor Bone, that's fine?
Yeah.
Chair, I can call the question or I can take.
Please do.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yeah.
Thank you. Pass is four one.
All right. So now we're going to move on to closed session. Jefferson, would you please provide us your background on this with the background?
Thank you, Chair. I sent attention to the board to meet in closed session for a conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation under Government Code Section 549, 56.9, D2 and E3, regarding exposure to litigation in three potential cases, claims for property tax refund from Pacific Bell, AT&amp;T Mobility and T-Mobile West.
All right, thank you, and now we'll get a.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, yes, Supervisor Bass?
This is for all sites located in Humboldt County, right?
It's specific to Humboldt County.
But all sites, I, but what, what I'm getting to is I have two cell towers on a piece of property I manage. I don't financially, it doesn't financially affect anything else because they're 15-year leases. So I just don't know if there's a conflict on it because the leases have just been renewed, so I, I'm not going to get any more money in the next 1,458 days.
It would relate to the property taxes on all the sites within the county for those three companies.
Good.
So is that clear for you, Supervisor Bone, then?
Clear enough.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public comments? All right, we have two speakers. The first one's going to be Kent. speakers. The first one's going to be Kent and then followed by Thomas.
Well, that was an interesting, long drawn out thing. So this topic, I think this was on before. I seem to remember this back before. Maybe it's a rehash before or still anticipated existing. The criteria for having a conflict of interest is if there could be a perception of a conflict of interest. And just asking the question means that the Supervisor Bone had a potential perception of that and therefore should recuse himself. I do believe that earlier in the end of thing, Michelle Bushnell was right. If you, the main time you abstain from voting is if you do not have enough information or enough clarity to vote on an issue. That's the main time that that should happen. Otherwise, you should recuse yourself from the discussion at the beginning of the thing if you have a conflict. So those are my understanding. I could be corrected by your staff. I highly recommend you find some form of settlement with the, some of the biggest dogs in our world around here regarding their assessments. There's got to be some reason why they're objecting. And again, maybe you need some kind of a peacemaker involved in this one to work out with those people. Or maybe there's no give on their part and they just feel they're right and you're going to pay the piper. Thank you for my opportunity. Have a good closed session. I assume that's it for the day.
I think so, but thank you, Ken.
And when will you be reporting out? What time? Do you have a rough idea?
Jefferson, what do you think?
This should be fairly short, less than 15 minutes, I imagine.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. And then Thomas, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mulder here. Remind you, as you're trying to negotiate a settlement with the, the big cell phone tower companies of Humboldt County, that you do not have an ordinance that requires them to have fire safe roads to their commercial sites. So maybe you can figure out some, as you're negotiating this property tax issue. I'd, I'd recommend that you also negotiate a, figure a way to have retroactive fire safe roads to their sites. So the, the county residents can also be safe as you require other commercial activities to have fire safe roads to their site. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you, Thomas. And I believe that's it. Mind with one more time? Yep. So we will adjourn to, well, I want to ask first. Are you guys want to go straight into closed session? Or do you want a brief break from the board members?
It's gonna be quick.
Okay.
Wrap her up.
Famous last words. All right. Okay. So we will go directly into closed session.
One, one second.
I forgot, almost the most important person.
Sorry. Gotta start the recording.